June 30th, 6 o'clock. We're going to talk about this septic plant tonight. We'll start with a roll call.
Commissioner Fleese.
President.
Friend, here. Hooper.
Here.
Edman.
Here.
Max Bauer.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Stebka.
Here.
Wheelock.
Yes ma'am.
Chairman Thomas.
Yep. First thing is public comment. Would you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment should be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. A, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. B, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluded time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. One, chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Having heard that, who wants to speak first? State your name and address, please.
John Porter, 4159 North Spider Lake Road. Well, I'm happy to be here again tonight to talk about septic. Everybody's talking about Michael Jackson all the time, so this is probably the only place you can go where you're not talking about Michael Jackson. I'll tell you, this media, this media is getting really creepy, isn't it? I mean, the media in this country is competing for advertising dollars and they're getting really creepy, I think, so. Anyway, well, on the subject of media, I was reading in the editorial, the Record Eagle, Grand Traverse County Commissioners need to endorse a probe into negligence in the design and construction of the county's failed septic treatment plant, an effort that could bring $500,000 payoff for a $10,000 investment. On the face of it, that sounds like pretty good odds. If you go down to the casino and, you know, if you had 10,000 laying around and you put it on the roulette wheel, you'd probably get 360,000 if you hit. So, these odds look like they're better than casino. But any public official making a statement like that, $10,000 is going to get you 500,000, would have reporters following them around like puppies, you know. Please, please say something else, you know. You know, it's really an outrageous statement. And I guess if you buy ink by the barrel, you can get away with that kind of thing. But if you have 10,000 laying around, I'd like to point out to you that this septic treatment plant project has not been closed out. In the events of the last month or two, you've lost your project manager for that project, the county's representative. You've also lost the DPW attorney, who's resigned, happened to be the same person. But you've lost two roles. Now, Ross isn't here. I don't know for sure what the interim DPW director does, but you've got your DPW director is out of town. And you've got an interim DPW director, and he may even be an interim, interim DPW director, because they're advertising the position of interim. So are you ready to go to war over this subject, you know, with this contractor, with your former attorney? I would suggest you have some structural problems that make it very difficult for you to really engage in an all-out fight, and I think it's going to cost a lot more than 10,000 if that's the way you want to go. What I would suggest, since you haven't closed this plant out, that you go find a downstate engineering firm and see what they would charge you to take a project manager position with a specific deliverable. Close this project out. Go down the checklist of everything that was in the contract, what was supposed to be done, what's on the contractor's side, what's on our side. Let the engineers handle this. A major engineering firm from downstate, maybe the one that came in and helped us when the wall fell down. You've already got a relationship with an engineering firm that's gotten into this subject a bit. Maybe you should get a proposal from them. What would it take to have them take control of this project and close it out on behalf of the county? And I think that would be a better use for the 10,000. And I think Chris Bezdox did a nice job with the work that he's done. I don't want to diminish that in any way, but he's raised a couple of questions. But they're, these are just legitimate issues to raise in the course of closing out a construction project. There's going to be grievances on either side, where everybody says, "Well, you should have done this." "No, you should have done that." This happens on construction projects. They never go completely the way they were planned. And an engineering firm that's familiar with large construction projects, operating on your behalf, I think, could do a good job to close this project out in a satisfactory way. And I hate to see this thing become a subject of tabloid journalism. It's an engineering issue, and to close that project out should be engineers dealing with engineers. And if they need to hire lawyers at some point, if your engineering company that represents you has to hire a lawyer, perhaps that lawyer could be recommended by the downstate engineering firm, someone that they're familiar with and comfortable with. I think this is something that should be looked at. Thank you.
BJ, who next? That was easy.
One more.
Oh, go ahead.
My name's Tony Anzorgi, 10101 East Carter Road, Traverse City, Michigan, 49684. As I have submitted written comment on the septic treatment facility for this meeting, and as my understanding, the Commissioners have a copy of that letter. I will not read the entire letter, but summarize the main points. The county has already paid for an independent outside legal opinion concerning the management structure of the BPW and ownership of the STF. It's interesting to note that the contract between the BPW and the townships is what obligates the townships for the financial responsibility for the STF, but also vests the power of operations of the STF and the Sewer and Water Committee. Thus, the BPW, and by extension, the County Commissioners, can't act without Sewer and Water Committee approval on almost any STF issue without violating the contract with the townships, which violation may relieve the townships of their financial obligation under the contract. Besides the apparent conflict with the DPW Act, the present organizational structure has one party responsible for management of the STF, the BPW, while holding another party financially responsible, the townships. This has led to many of the various conflicts seen with the STF and might eventually lead to legal conflict between the townships and the county, and I don't believe that this is in the best interest of anyone. I would suggest that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners follow the advice of the outside independent council that is already procured. I would suggest that the county declares intent to take over the operation obligations of the STF by renegotiating the contract with the townships. This renegotiation would entail making clear that the BPW, and by extension, the County Board of Commissioners, is ultimately responsible for operation and maintenance of the STF. And who would own the assets of the STF? This action would bring the STF organizational structure into compliance with the DPW Act, address the present and potential conflicts, and set a foundation to proceed collectively together. Even if the County Board of Commissioners doesn't act on this suggestion immediately, it and the BPW should keep the current contractual relationship in mind and avoid intentionally violating the current contract until it is renegotiated. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I would attempt to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Anybody got a question? Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll close public comment, and the first item on our agenda is the question of ownership. Who wants to talk to that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, you know, we asked Commissioners of issues that they had, that they wanted to talk about tonight, and this is really a session for you to kind of brainstorm and talk among yourselves and kind of get the issues out on the table. We didn't get a lot of comments, so we put some ideas down here that you may want to talk about. But, you know, don't feel completely married to this agenda, you know, there really are ideas. When I put ownership on here, I wanted to give you the opportunity to talk among yourself, whether or not the county has an interest in owning this at some point in time, how you're feeling about that. But, you know, this is just a guideline for you to use, and you guys can, you really can talk about any issue that you want to.
Can I ask a quick question? Are you going to give an overview of the subcommittee?
Oh.
Status of the subcommittee?
We were not going to go back through that. I talked to a few Commissioners, and we did that at the municipal meeting about a week and a half ago. So we weren't intending to go back over that. This was really just a night of discussion for Commissioners.
Okay, and I missed the first 15 or 20 minutes of that, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I made the meeting, so don't feel the need to relook at that.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Friend's comment. Ross, do you have any more to update us on beyond what was presented at the joint township-county meeting in terms of flow activity at Bay Harbor and/or your scheduled designated public hearings in the community in terms of how you would see that whole flow out?
No, we haven't, we haven't set a calendar on that, but Dennis and I have talked that we will prepare a calendar of those meetings that will be held out around the county. As far as flow, all of the paperwork was completed last week, and I think it went to the city manager today for the additional flow from Bay Harbor. And I expect that that will be approved, because it was approved by Scott Blair and OMI as to the, what the quality is, and that would process about 30,000 to 50,000 gallons more per day while we're there. So if that comes in, that will be very good. And I have talked with the township supervisors and indicated that as soon as we get the approval on that, my intent is to go ahead and notify the townships that we will proceed to take the waste immediately. And we have a new draft contract that will go to Sewer and Water and to the Board of Public Works as quick as we can get that contract, but we'll take the waste to begin with.
There are a couple of other things I, well, I can update you on. In your packet that I sent, that was sent to you, you do have a letter from John Axe concerning the county board's ability to special assess. And John indicates that you do not have the ability to special assess. That's inherent in the responsibilities of the Board of Public Works. But John goes on to add that while there's no provision authorizing the Board of Commissioners to levy special assessments, Section 2 of Act 185 provides that the Board of Commissioners shall have under, have under general control, excuse me, should have, shall have the general control of the Department of Public Works. Under the provision and under the provision which allows the Board of Commissioners to establish, to make rules in respect to Department of Public Works, it might be appropriate for the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution requesting the public, Board of Public Works to seek the approval of the Board of Commissioners before a final special assessment rule takes effect. So they're saying you can influence them kind of, or attempt to, by taking action either before or afterwards in regards to that, but the actual setting of the special assessment is vested in the Board of Public Works. The other thing I wanted to mention, just real quickly, this just happened in a meeting we had today, you know, one of the recommendations of URS was to look at some engineering modifications at the plant, which will bring about some utility improvements. We're working with the city on trying to put together a energy package of improvements for our government buildings under the stimulus plan, and it's been pushed back a couple months now, twice now. But we're waiting for the numbers from Scott Blair, because we're thinking that it's very possible that that will, those will be eligible improvements that we can put into the stimulus plan. And so as soon as we get those numbers from Scott, we're going to add that into our package that we put in. There's a $650,000 limit per county to put in, but we talked today, and we think this might be something that we can pay for out of the stimulus money, or at least apply for.
All right. Quick question. Wondering if you've given some thought as to the format of how you would proceed, or staff would proceed, whoever's going to be conducting these public information sessions around the community regarding the septic treatment plant, that, you know, that it would be perhaps in a format of, you know, here's basically the history of the, history of why it was, why we agreed to build it, and this is kind of occurred, this is the process that kind of went forward with in terms of the repair, and this is kind of where we're at right now. And then there are, then there's the USR report, which kind of outlines alternatives to, for, you know, the revenue restoration of the plant. And then there's the subsequent issues that the community has been dealing with, the Board of Public Works, Sewer and Water, the County Board, and that is, you know, the narrow scope review, how that process will go, and whether, you know, the public feels about in terms of the ownership question, if we can get some feedback from them, whether they feel that, you know, it really is a county plant, not really, shouldn't be really a five township plant. And those, those kinds of public feedbacks, and I was viewing your session perhaps as a means for us as a board and the Board of Public Works and Sewer and Water Committee to get more public information and feedback about how they view the direction we should be going in. Is that, is that kind of how we're going to do it, or is it just going to be the financing part of it?
No, I think there's more than the financial. It's to get into a good dialogue with all the people throughout the county, and that includes the city, because they're included just because we need to include all, all the citizens of the county so they know what's going on. I think it would be a point to clarify actually what has happened, why we're there, but we don't, we can, we don't want to spend a lot of time on that. We want to spend the time on what do they think should happen, and how can we bring that back? Now, the goal was, when we talked with the Septic Finance Committee, that Doug Mansfield and Rob Madigold and myself would draft the questions and the answers, and we'd bring back those questions and answers to the Septic Subcommittee on Finance. And then from that, that would set the tone as to the type of session that we'll have. If there are questions that they want, in other words, do you, if you want to put the question as to whether you want it to be county-owned, or whether it's by the five townships, or whatever, those can be questions so that you can get that input and bring it back, so that we know exactly what the citizens are thinking out there. That's what it's designed to do. We're proposing about five or six meetings. It would not be in every township, but there would be groupings of townships like Fife Lake, Paradise, Union. Some of those would be grouped in one, and we would do Green Lake and some of those others in that area. So Green Lake, Long Lake possibly. But six meetings, I think, is what we would deal, and then you would be addressing those, as John Axe suggested at one time, almost as separate units in a special assessment, if you wanted to do that.
Do you think you're being premature in going out to these meetings? And if I can explain, explain my question, it's because, don't you think you should have a more concrete proposal about, you know, what's being suggested before you go, you know, talking to the public?
Have you been talking to Beth? I don't know. Now, that was her comment, first of all. And it's whether you want to go out to them and say, "Here is our proposal," and have them react to it, which a lot of people say that's the big brother attitude, or you go out with the idea, "We're here to listen to you," and then craft the proposal and take it back to people so that they can do it with that input. I favor the latter rather than the first one. And that's, I know Beth raised the same question at the very beginning.
Well, here's, here's my problem with that, Ross. You are by nature a very optimistic person, and that's, and that's, and that's good, you know. But sometimes the optimism can be carried too far. I don't mean necessarily you personally, but in general. And if the situation is presented in a, you know, we're about to turn the corner, we're almost there financially, people are going to say, "Well, then what are you here asking us for money for?"
I don't think we would, we would make that statement, because that situation could turn, you know, next week. And I think that's been another thing that Christine has mentioned a number of times. If Bay Harbor goes away, we have serious problems.
Even if Bay Harbor doesn't go away, we have serious problems?
You do, but not, not as great. I think that you have to look at that and say, you know, exactly what kind of flows are we going to get? Dean's proposal needs to be looked at again, and we need to go and play with that, that software and see what you can do. But I think in your memo, and one of the, the holding tank owners was suggesting that if they were looking at a special assessment, there ought to be a special assessment and some small per gallon fee that can be used for debt retirement.
Well, I mean, mostly my concern is that if you read the, you know, the final conclusion of the Plant Moran Report, they're really talking about maybe a $210,000, $220,000 a year deficit that needs to be made up, which honestly isn't, I mean, it's not good, but it's not a huge amount of money. If you look at Dean's numbers, that he came out with just a month or so after that, you're looking at a half million dollar a year deficit. And a lot of the assumptions in the Plant Moran Report are, we don't even know if we can support. For instance, how much money we, you know, we generate from outside county revenue, how much money we can save in labor, how much money we can save in utilities and so forth. I'm just, I'm afraid that if we put too much lipstick on the pig, then people are not going to be willing to, you know, realize what needs to be done.
I don't think that we would be doing that. I think the, the idea is to gather that input. At the same time, you are proceeding along other lines to look at the options, for instance, on the savings in energy costs, the savings in operations costs. Talking with Scott Blair, we should have that proposal back from OMI pretty quickly. We will have the energy report back, which may not prove much, but again, those things are going on, on the same time, same timeframe. So that, I think that if, if you're looking at this, this isn't going to be done next week. This is not a congressional thing that says we're going to pass it by the end of the week. I'm looking at this to be a three or four month process. So it's not going to be, if we don't proceed, then you're still going to have three or four months in the future. That's my concern.
Ross, I guess one of the things that's always been a discussion, you know, is the certificate of substantial completion. Can you tell me, you know, explain to me and the people that are watching and in the audience exactly what is it that we have, a certificate of substantial completion? It's my understanding that the contractor and the engineering firm still are in possession of the plant. It hasn't been turned over to us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And when do, do we perceive when that's going to happen?
Thursday, the finalization of everything, and believe me, I think that, I forget the name of the firm, but I could give you a name of a firm that you don't want to order things from, because they mess up the order three times on a, on one valve that is finishing it. It will be finished by Thursday. There will be in our hand a request to start the testing with OMI on Thursday. So we're anxious to get that, and it's like everyone says, we need to get that finalized, and that's part of it.
Chris?
Ross, I have a serious concern about accepting final completion. And my concern is that if there is an investigation and we accept final completion, you know, we're basically agreeing, at least in my view, that everything is fine and dandy, and I would really caution on that acceptance.
To that, to that point, Chairman Paul raised the question with, with OMI and asked that they delay anything on.
With Gordie Fraser and Chris.
Gordie Fraser, Chris, I'm sorry, had asked that they delay the, that until we have some, something going where we know where we're going with that. And I agree with you. I think that we need to hire somebody to go through that, and as a matter of fact, I'm asking to get a meeting with Dennis Gordie Fraser-Christman after, I think about the middle of July, to sit down and talk about how we would go through the process of that.
And I have a question for my fellow Commissioners. Now that we have this letter from John Axe, and it says, "We cannot special assess," why would we take ownership? How are we going to pay for it?
Good question.
No, I think, if I could, is it okay to answer? What the letter says is that the county board does not have the ability to special assess, but your Board of Public Works does have the ability to special assess. So if your Board of Public Works special assesses, would you actually take over ownership? I don't think you would. It would be the Board of Public Works that would take over ownership, but the Board of Public Works is a part of the county, so in effect, it would be part of the county.
Dennis, I've always had a question. Who actually owns this plant? Now, I did ask Mr. Houlihan at a public meeting that very question, and I put it to him this way. I said, "Okay, let us assume we spent $10 million to build the plant, and we sell it tomorrow for $15 million. Does the county get that extra $5 million profit?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, then we don't own it." Who actually owns that plant?
I would have to go back and pull Mr. Houlihan's opinion that he provided to us, because I'm not comfortable speaking to the particulars of that without reviewing that.
Like, I'm looking at a response from, what's that?
Beth, I think you have that answer that Mr. Houlihan.
Well, I'm looking for a response from John Axe, and it was directed to Dean Bott that said, apparently you posed some questions to him, and one was on the ownership of the facility. Go ahead, leave it there.
I was just showing that to Dennis. One of the first meetings that we had is the Septic Subcommittee. I apologize if I don't have the name right, but that issue came up. Who owns the septic treatment facility? We asked that question of John Axe, our bond counsel, and Commissioner Friend, do you have the same?
I do have a copy of it.
This is page two, "Ownership of the STF pursuant to Act 185 and Sections 2 and 22 of the contract. The county owns the project until the 2003 bonds and the 2004 bonds are retired in full."
I, I, no, and I, I mean, I have that, I have also a letter from John that says, "The STF is owned by the county of Grand Traverse until all the bonds issued to finance it are retired." I knew that part of it, but the question is, what is the mechanism whereby the townships can take ownership of it after the bonds are retired? And I know Michael addressed that issue in a memo, in an opinion to us, that there was a mechanism for the townships to take ownership of it, and these guys probably remember it. I don't. I don't know if it was for a dollar or whatever, or the townships had the right to ask and say, "We're going to take it." But I know there is a mechanism in those contracts that allows that to happen. I just don't know what it is.
I do remember when I had read the information from Dean, from John Axe, and it said, you know, the county owns it, and when the bonds are paid off, it would either, you know, it would, it would go to who those bonds were taken out for. And so I posed the question, "Well, how do you own it by five townships, you know, or how would that, how exactly would that work?" And I can't find the response right here, but, oh, here it is. The, the transfer of owner, because it talked about, actually, it would go to an authority, would be like the optimal situation, be easily transferred to an authority. So I asked, "Was this ever covered when the contracts were set up?" There was no authority in place, nor to my knowledge were they, you know, headed down there at a quick pace to an authority. So I asked, "How were they planning on transferring the ownership in the original contract?" And John Axe's response was that it was not covered in the contract whatsoever. So I guess they really didn't address the issue, is my understanding.
Of how it would be done?
Right.
Transfer, is my understanding, too. Yes, I think that's probably correct.
So I don't know if it was just an oversight, or, you know, how they felt they were going to do it. I don't know that.
Larry?
Well, what sort of prompted my interest in having this meeting, and we talked about this, I think about 30 days ago, was that we've got this, I think about 30 days ago, was that we've got kind of a multi-layer structure here with the relationship with the Board of Commissioners being, and the county being the bonding agent. Then we have Sewer and Water Committee made up of various folks, including some township supervisors, and then we have the Board of Public Works, kind of mixed membership as well. And then we have the five townships that actually, technically, at least from our viewpoint, kind of own and operate the thing. And my concern was that, at the beginning of the year, that my hope was that we wouldn't finish the year in the same kind of status we were at the beginning of the year, was that we didn't have a decision on how we were going to want to finance the plant, to correct the deficit, and get it on a financial path of solvency. And the issue of ownership, the issue of review, legal review and investigative review, that we were going to get down to the end of the year, and we're still kind of crossing paths, and nobody has made a decision. So my concern was, let's have this meeting and talk about, can we, is there a mechanism in place that we can engage the five townships, Sewer and Water, and the Board of Public Works, and say, from now, let's say, to the end of the year, everybody's going to be in agreement that this is the path we're going to take. We're going to hold, for example, public hearings on the alternatives for the treatment plan and educational process, and kind of how we got there. Then we were going to come back, and how are we going to address that information? Was it going to go to the Board of Public Works? Was it going to go to the county? Were we going to hold a joint meeting? What is the path that we're going to take from now to the end of the year, so everybody is in the same, if we can get to in the same agreement with all the players that we've got here, that we can come to some conclusion by the end of the year and say, yes, by the end of the year, our goal is to inform the public, make a decision on what, on the financing of the plant, make a decision on the ownership, make a decision on the scope review, and we're all going down the same path together, and we all understand the process that we're going to use going forward to the end of the year. So that was my hope in terms of addressing this issue here at this meeting, is to have some dialogue about that and maybe come back and have, you know, either a subsequent meeting or a subsequent direction from the townships, the Board of Public Works, and Sewer and Water Committee, as, let's set some priorities, let's set some goals and objectives from now to the end of the year. We all agree on it, and we'll move forward. We'll assign who's responsible for what, and let's all work together instead of, you know, some of us thinking that we've got to move on ownership right away, or some of us decide we've got to move on the revenue side right away, and some of them say we've got to do the legal review right away. I mean, I sort of agree, we can do all of them at the same time. It's just that, are we all going to agree that's what we want to have done? And how are we going to do it? And what's our timeframe to get it done? Can we get it done by the end of the year, for example? Is that unreasonable? So my goal was to come to some consensus, hopefully after this meeting, and set something up and says, do we have an agreement with the five townships that really own it, and our partners with Sewer and Water, and our county board, as to what the game plan is for the end of the year?
I've got a question for Dean. Dean, the plant doesn't take in enough revenue to pay for the bonds. How much money are we talking would the county or the townships, whomever, need to put into that plant to buy down that debt so that the revenue would cover it? A million, two million, three?
Commissioner, that's a tough question to answer because there are, you know, many variables. It's hard to project what the financial picture is truly for the Septage Treatment Facility. We haven't taken title to the plant, for one. We have a limited amount of financial history, you know, in terms of, it really hasn't functioned or operated at capacity. You know, we're looking at different revenue sources. We've got the Bay Harbor contract. I'm a financial person, and it would--
That's why I asked you that question.
Well, I would be hard pressed to put together a financial projection and say that we're going to hit that because of all of the unknowns. There are many variables. We know what we know in terms of, we know what our debt service requirements are. That's a given. Our ability to process at maximum capacity, I think, is the ultimate goal here, but I'm not even sure if we know that we can do that. And then you've got the issues with the expanded service area in terms of how much additional flow that would bring into the plant. I know I'm not answering your question, but I do financial projections for a living. I mean, that's what I do, and you just don't know. And I'm very conservative by nature, so I'm not going to tell you it's better than it is. We do have, we've had to put cash into it. We've advanced cash to this fund to, you know, for cash flow purposes, to make the debt payments, because the operations do not, you know, fully fund the debt service. And who knows, really, you know, what, I wouldn't tell you with any certainty what I think 2009 is going to look like until we're actually through the year. So I know that's not the answer that you're looking for, but it's still, you know, a startup business for a lot of, you know, for lack of a better term, and there's a lot of uncertainty with what the potential revenues are, and even what the, you know, the true costs of operating the plant are, because there's many variable costs that, you know, as you expand to that capacity level, what happens with the variable cost components?
I have a question for Dennis as well. Dennis, at one of our last meetings, I asked you whether or not we could actually take money out of Elmwood Township's treasury. And I'm not picking on Elmwood Township necessarily, but because they're in Lelandaw County. And it was my understanding that the other townships, we could, according to the agreements, take money out of their treasury, but you indicated that we might not be able to take money out of Elmwood's. Did you--
Well, no.
--get an answer to that question by any chance?
No, I didn't. You know, I guess I could ask Bob Cooney that question, but since we didn't have a DPW attorney, I just didn't have that opportunity to pursue that. But we can do that. As, again, they probably know, they know the contracts, and they probably know what we can do and what we can't. I'm sure Jack knows whether or not, how that's done. But I think there's, as I told you last week, there's a mechanism there whereby, I would assume there's a way we can do it by signing a contract with Elmwood Township as part of the agreement if we decided to, you know, move in the direction of a special assessment. It might be that we have a contract with Elmwood Township, and Elmwood Township decides how they collect the money from their septic tank owners. I don't know the particulars of it. But if you want me to ask Bob Cooney, I can ask him that question. I don't know how familiar he is with those documents, but I can ask him to look at the contract.
Okay, so evidently, we own the plant until it's paid off, and there's no mechanism to transfer it, it sounds like. So if we pay off the debt and hold on to it, then what would the townships, the requests would they have? Sounds like they don't want it anyway.
Well, I mean--
I mean, that's, so if we own it, we own it, we will own it, pay off the debt, we own it. It's just a matter of transferring it. And if we don't transfer it, then we own it.
Well, you still have the contracts with the townships that guarantee the repayment of the cost of operation, so I don't think that goes away when the bonds are paid off.
Oh.
You know, I mean, there's still that, now, there may be plenty of money, you know, once the bonds are paid off, and I think 20 years or 30 years.
Twenty.
Twenty years. There may be money that you don't need any kind of guarantees any longer because of the revenue that's coming in, because right now, you have $600,000 in bond payments annually, and you have about $600,000 of operation annually. Now, of course, there'll be inflationary increases in the operational cost. That's clear. We don't know what's going to happen with the flows. So, but in 20 years, when the bonds are paid off, you're really talking about, well, you'll be talking about, obviously, improvements to the facility, repair and replacement in the facility. I have no idea what that would cost. And just one other point on that I wanted to make clear, I know the commission knows this, but you realize, of course, that the bonds are not callable at this time. It's going to be several years before we're allowed to even pay down that debt. So we don't have the ability, if we wanted to right now, to go in there and reduce down that payment. We have to wait until the time that the bonds have become callable and you can buy them back.
Well, I guess I have a couple of things. One, you know, I appreciate the analogy that Dean made a minute ago. You know, we're talking about a multimillion dollar business that's actually only been operational about eight months. You know, there's a lot of entrepreneurs in this country that would love to be able to come up with a business that would be turning a profit and recovering its debt within an eight-month period from the time it's operational. You know, it's a multimillion dollar business that has been operating eight months and still has not reached full capacity and operation, you know. So, you know, the idea that, you know, this thing should be turning a profit already is pretty far-fetched in my mind. The other thing, you know, for the people that I talk to throughout the community, they have no idea, when we talk about Sewer and Water Committee, Board of Public Works, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, they have no idea about the distinction of each. So I guess what I'd like is, you know, Dennis or Ross, to tell us who constitutes the Sewer and Water Committee, who sets on the, what representation makes up the Board of Public Works. We know what this commission is. The people know who we are because they elect us. But as I go through the community, and I talk about the Sewer and Water Committee, you know, made the decisions, it was their plant, they designed it, they built it, had it built, and absolutely, I always give them credit for doing that because I still believe treating the septic is absolutely the right thing to do. But the community has no idea, when I talk about Sewer and Water Committee, Board of Public Works, they have no idea what we're talking about. And I guess I'd like to have some sort of definition of what constitutes a Sewer and Water Committee, what constitutes the Board of Public Works, because the community still thinks it's a county plant, and we should be responsible for it.
Well, want me to take that, Dennis?
Sure, go ahead.
It really, and I can go right back to 1976. In 1976, the Board of Public Works consisted of the Drain Commissioner and eight county supervisors, not commissioners. And then it was upon my recommendation that we got away from that as being eight county supervisors, because, again, along comes the Open Meetings Act, and eight of the county commissioners would have violated, they had 15 supervisors at that time. So that was a majority. Plus, we said there needed to be more representation. What was brand new in 1976 and '77 was the sewer system, and the water systems were coming in. So, and to give you the total background, the answer was, do you, are you going to maintain the system? And the question went to the city, first of all, to, would you operate and maintain the system on behalf of the townships? And Buck Williams, who was superintendent of Public Works for the city, said, "Yes, we would." And then Fred Canfield, who was the supervisor of Garfield Township at the time, asked Buck, "Well, if you have a sewer blockage in the city and one in the township, what are you going to do?" And Buck said, "We're going to service the city people first." And Fred said, "That's not acceptable," and that's where they formed their own operating arm. Well, then, if you have an operating arm, you need a board, and that's what we said with the Board of Public Works, that the townships that are paying for it need to be represented on there. From that, it grew, that we said it also would be good to have a representative from the city on that board, because the city, technically, the city has not owned the wastewater treatment plant since, I think, probably in the early '70s, when they made modifications, because every time a bond gets paid off, they redo it, and the county is behind the bond. So technically, just like it is in the Septage Plant, the county actually owns the plant, but you really don't, only till the bonds are paid. And you have, you know, the same units of government are in those bond agreements, including the city, to pay off those bonds. If they're not paid by the other units of government, you have the legal right to go back and enforce that payment. Now, after that got extended, we then, along came with a solid waste program, which was, you know, another one. And we said, "Well, do you want to create another whole board to run solid waste?" And the answer at the County Board of Commissioners at that time was, "No. We'd like to expand the duties of the Board of Public Works and have solid waste fall under there." So that said, we need to take one of the seats we had there and keep it for solid waste. So if you look at it, it went from there, and that's where it was, and you now have a rural representative appointed by the Grand Traverse County Township Association, and that comes up to the county board, because you make the final appointments, they make a recommendation. The Drain Commissioner is covered by statute. The urban representative usually historically is the chairman of the Sewer and Water Committee. Well, the Sewer and Water Committee came into existence in the '90s. And that, again, was the problem, that we had a board that is making decisions about where the spending is, and the five townships that were paying the money at that time did not have the votes. I mean, and so you had that relationship that was written up that said, any financial item that has to be passed going to the Board of Public Works has to be recommended by the Sewer and Water Committee. I take full blame for that. I was the one who suggested it, and I say now, it was, you know, it worked fine for a long time. It's not working now. You ought to consider some options that are there now. But you had one urban representative, the city representative, and the Board of Commissioners had one representative, Resource Recovery, and then you had three members at large. And that's where it stands with today. That's the Board of Public Works, and they are the actual body that is empowered by state legislation to issue bonds, to put special assessments, to do all sorts of things. Then with the creation of the Sewer and Water, there was an agreement that was written up in 1996, and then along comes Blair Township later on, and when they came into it, they had to rewrite that to bring in Blair Township under this. And so the Sewer and Water Committee has a restructured agreement again. But my suggestion might be to the county board and to the townships that I've been working for recently and talking with them, that they need to look at whether or not you need the Sewer and Water Committee, period. It costs about $23,000 a year in time, other materials and other things, per year to run the Sewer and Water Committee. And that's something that takes a lot of time. It takes the township supervisors' times, it takes the staff time, it takes a lot to have those two meetings every month. I think that a realistic view of that ought to be taken by the county board to see whether they think that they should reorganize the structure of the Board of Public Works, and I would ask the townships that they look at it. I don't know, I know the township supervisors pretty well, and they spend a lot of time in those meetings. And then there's a lot of follow-up that comes out of every one of those meetings. So I think that it's time that this county and the Sewer and Water Committee and the townships that are in that, plus the rural townships, ought to begin looking and saying, is there a better makeup? We already had a letter from the city saying that they did not want their representative to vote on anything that was strictly a township cost. So it's a potential on that, that you could make the city representative ex officio with non-voting. I mean, you're there to get the input because they have a big share of the wastewater treatment plant, but on a flow basis, actually, the townships have about equal flow to the city on the wastewater treatment plant. So that's maybe a thing that I would suggest, Sonny, that you begin looking at that. It worked in the '90s, it's not working now.
So the Sewer and Water Committee is the six townships, along with a county commissioner and a city representative?
So we'd add more people to the DPW and eliminate Sewer and Water?
No, you can't add more people. You're bound by state statute to nine. But I've looked at it, and I think that if you did restructure it, you could certainly restructure it and put the six townships on there, keeping the Drain Commissioner, one county commissioner, and one representative from solid waste.
The problem with that, Ross, is I got a letter last week at our meeting at the Civic Center from the so-called rural townships, that they're not, they had nothing to say about this, and yet now they're, we're talking about assessing them for it. So, you know, if we eliminate a rural representative, then, you know, is that compounded?
Well, I think, I think the point is, is that it may be time to review or restructure. We actually talked about this a couple of years ago.
Absolutely. We had John Axe at a meeting at Garfield Township about a year ago. We talked-- We talked about it in very extensive discussions. And I think his recommendation came back that although it's certainly not a conventional method, it's working very well for this community.
Well...
Or it has worked very well for this community.
That's right. But, my only point is, is that after you engage in some discussions with the townships, there may be a way that you can address that issue by giving them that representation. It may still work. You may not have, maybe a solid waste. No longer comes under the BPW. Maybe you put that under, right under you. We talked about that before in another discussion. So, that's another option. And then, you could put a rural township member on there. There are a lot of ways you could look at this. And, but I guess the point is that Ross is raising is that that may be an alternative to discussions of an authority or other things. There just may be a better way to do this. And I think that should be looked at. It's been a long time since we looked at it.
I remember that meeting at Garfield Township. I went to that and I think you were being generous, saying there was extensive discussion because I remember just a few people asking questions. Has there been any follow-up with that, either the Sewer and Water Committee, BPW, or Grand Tewas County Board of Commissioners since then?
My impression, based on that, was there was a general feeling that while it may have been, had multiple layers, that what John Axe came up with was that it's still one of the best run ones that he'd seen. And no one came to me and said, "I still think we ought to look at changing it." Plus, then there was a change. You know, we had a lot of new people elected, so you don't know. I don't think there's been much discussion of it at all.
That was actually in January of 2008 and I think they did discuss the Act 233, Authority for Purposes of Operation, Joint Operations Under Interlocal, the operation of sewer and water systems by each individual unit and private operation. And the authority has always been a question, so... And I wouldn't say that, you know, if you look at the Board of Public Works, and that would be up to the townships that are really paying the bill, restructuring the Board of Public Works may not be the final answer. They may want to continue to look at an authority. That's strictly there. But, all I'm saying is, I think it would be advisable if we could have the county board look at it and look at what questions they may raise and ask each of the townships to give you their input, including the rural townships. I don't like to use the word rural. The other townships.
Just my opinion that, you know, if we're leading in the direction, based on, you know, further input from Ross and his public hearing process, that the special assessment is probably going to be the best solution for the viability of the septic treatment plant. My question is, can we get ahead of the curve a little bit and ask John Axe to review all the agreements and the bonding contracts and everything we have in place? And let us know what procedurally would need to be taken? What procedure, what we would have to take to have the county take the full ownership? And how that would work, whether we would have to create a whole new, we would have to amend the original agreements? Or would we have to create all new agreements? And resubmit, resubmit that to the market? If you change any of those agreements and you bond, and you bond it, would we be required to re-bond it with a new agreement? Or can we change the agreements and keep the bonding in place? And mechanically, how would you go about, for example, you know, the issue of the contractual agreements with the townships? How you, how you would amend those or discharge those? And so, we would have at least, you know, a basis of understanding as the process is going through, whether there will be an ownership change or not. If there, if there were to occur an ownership change, then, you know, what procedure would we have to go through to make that happen? I think that would be valuable information to get ahead of the curve a little bit on that. So, I don't know if you guys agree or disagree with that. And if you agree, then maybe we can just direct staff to have, to get John Axe to give us that report, so... I mean, I would be in favor of asking staff to do that.
You know, I'm just concerned that maybe we're a little premature with that, Larry, because, you know, first and foremost, you know, to me, this plant, although the county holds the bonds, this plant is still in possession, first of all, for right now, it's still in possession of the contractor and the engineer. But, I believe in even the long term, it belongs to those six-member townships of the Sewer and Water Committee. Now, that's the way I've always considered it. I believe anything as far as changing that should come as a request from them.
Well, I agree. Oh, I agree with that.
You know, I don't believe that we can sit here and tell the Sewer and Water Committee how they need to restructure and how we're going to restructure the septic treatment plant. I believe that they are the ones that signed the documents pledging their township to pay the bonds. Therefore, any changes in the structure of that agreement should be coming from them, not from us.
Didn't we have five resolutions?
I believe we did.
Yeah, we did. But, they're not, they're not, they don't really describe what they want us to do other than they want us to take over the, over the septic plant and relieve them of the debt. And I'm willing to talk about restructuring that, but I'm not sure I'm ready to relieve them of all of the debt.
And just to be clear, as we've clarified at an earlier board meeting, the source of those resolutions was the discrepancy between if there were, in fact, a county-wide special assessment district, we were concerned that, just to make sure that any township supervisors or boards didn't feel that they would retain ownership after it was paid for by a county-wide special assessment district. Correct, Larry?
That's correct. That's my understanding by the resolutions because we had asked them specifically if they would be interested in turning the plant over to the county. And I don't see where anybody would turn anything over to the county if we still held them responsible for the bonds. And I believe I told them that I would think that if the county were in the position to take that over and the board agreed to do that, they would be relieved of that particular bond. I think the board would agree to that. But, by special assessment, you're still going to have all the people, except for people that are on a sewer, paying in. And I may be simple-minded, but I think we've made a mountain out of a molehill. I really do. I don't see this thing near as complex as what I'm hearing tonight. And if the townships, and apparently they've indicated they're interested in getting the relief, I think the county should assume ownership of that plant. And I think we should proceed down that path. We can study this thing to death. I have to agree with you, Sonny. Like you said earlier, it's a multimillion dollar business. And I would say for the first eight months in operation, it hasn't done too badly. In fact, I had a banker in talking to me today, but I'm reluctant to ask him if I could borrow, say, seven and a half million to buy the plant because I think I'd be interested privately.
I do not see how we can discuss taking ownership of this plant when we have received a letter from council saying that we have no way to pay for it. That's what concerns me. The other thing, I mean, I think there are better ways. Another thing that bothers me, the rate per gallon. We've got to bring the rate per gallon down so that we're competitive with other plants. I mean, I think these are all questions that we have to have clarified.
Yeah, and I think when, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Commissioner Fleese, and I know you'll stop me if I do, but I just think he's not making this distinction between the BPW and the county, but just talking in general county.
Well, I have here in front of me a draft document prepared by Mr. Bott. And when Dean said earlier tonight that he is very conservative, he wasn't hidden. If you look at this document...
I like it that way.
If you look at this document, it's kind of a five-year projection. And he indicated that, I believe, that for $51 a month, assessment, county-wide assessment...
$51 a month?
A year.
Fifty-one a year, I mean. Excuse me. $51 a year.
You'll draw a crowd here tonight.
The county would be in good financial condition if...
He's a little more conservative.
$51 a year. Christine says we have to get the gallon per price down. Fifteen, or the $51 per year, per parcel owner, improved parcel owner in Grand Tewas County, I believe would more than adequately fund this situation. The, in my way of thinking, the gallon each fee would be gone. So, you'd be back to the days where you just pay in the pumper to pump it. He's going to deposit it at the thing. If you want to pump once a year, that's fine. For example, here, Dean in his projection, he had, he starts out good. But then, he really got conservative. Mayfield Township conservative. He started out with Bay Harbor income, for example, revenue, at $500,000. Which, pretty realistic, unless they went away totally.
Yes.
That's in 2010. Starting in 2011, he dropped that to $200,000 a year. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. But I'm, and I like to see that because when you look at what Dean projected here, it's kind of a worst-case scenario. I mean, it would be an absolute worst-case scenario. And yet, $51 per year is going to have a septic facility that isn't costing everybody an arm and a leg. And number two, I believe if we went and talked to the people in Calcasas County, put a holding tank over there so they didn't have to build a plant, because our plant hopefully would be big enough. We need to talk to Lillona. We've already got Elmwood and Jack involved here. But the rest of Lillona, because in 2010, anybody within 25 miles of that plant's going to have to take it to a plant somewhere.
Right.
So, if the townships want to get out from, under the legal obligations, and I really applaud the five townships that stepped up and took the action and the financial responsibility to build that plant because, in my opinion, the county board should have done that way back when, but they didn't. And I don't know why. I wasn't on the board. But, I really applaud them for doing that and having the foresight. And I, we've got the plant here and, like I said earlier, we can study this thing to death and we can do projections to death.
If the answer...
And if the projections aren't any good, you know...
If the answer is that simple, then why hasn't the Board of Public Works just assessed?
Why haven't they what?
Why, if the answer is that simple, why hasn't the Board of Public Works assessed improved property owners $51 a year?
Well, number one, I don't think you could carte blanche, just assess, do a $51 a year assessment on all the property owners because a lot of them, particularly, and I'll use the term rural townships, are not going to be in favor of that unless you have this education where you go out and explain it to them. And that's where Ross's survey, and I have to agree 100% with Ross and I've known Ross for years and years. I think his method of going out to the townships and getting their input first is really critical in this process, education process. And I think that thing would go through. Because you stop and think about it, even the person that doesn't have the money to pump their tank, it doesn't take much to figure out 12 cents times 1,500 gallons or 1,200 gallons, how much that costs versus $51 a year, you know? It's a win-win for everybody.
I, now, but this assessment doesn't handle debt service, right? All it will pay is the operation of the plant.
Right.
So, they still have...
But, you've got, you've got income beside, beside that, see? You, what do we got? $600,000, did you say?
$600,000 in operation.
Is the payment on the bonds?
Yes, $600,000 in payment on the bonds.
Yeah.
So, you could cover part of that by the grease revenue?
Right.
You have to decide what happens with holding tanks? Whether that's part of it or it's not part of it? It's only 420 some holding tanks, so it's not that much.
I think for conversation, I think the holding tanks should be included. It should be all-inclusive. Why would we want to penalize somebody like that, you know? Particularly in have them where maybe they weren't pumping their tank and they got a little seepage, you know, and they're next to a lake? I'd say include them.
Well, it's something you, I mean, it's something you just have to talk about with Board of Public Works because, you know, in the testimony they gave, some of those people pumped four or five times a year. Well, if they're paying $50 to pump four or five times a year, I don't know if it's 200 gallons, 400 gallons. We heard some of them are two, 3,000 gallons.
They're, usually, they're two 1,500 gallon tanks and they're pumping pretty close to 2,800.
So, that's the question you have to ask. Do you want to just let them pay $50 a year to pump anywhere from, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 gallons a year? When everybody else is pumping once every five years, perhaps? So, that's just a question you have to decide. It's whatever is decided by the Board of Public Works.
Those people with holding tanks also wouldn't be built there if they couldn't have holding tanks.
You know, but the other thing that you might want to think about when you talk about that, Commissioner, is you, the critical piece of special assessment is the way you go. The critical piece is figuring out how you're going to pay that debt. That's $600,000 a year and it ramps up a little bit from there. So, you know, you got a couple of things, there's a couple of things you know. You got, just if you decide, you're already committing the money for the new septic tank permits to this operation. So, perhaps that money could be committed. We talked about the fact that there's grease that could be committed. How much, Ross, in a year?
It's running about $60,000 to $70,000 a year. But that, I think that's probably, I'm guessing right now, I'm going to say it's anywhere from 40% to 50% of what the grease really is. We're getting more notices now and we're sending out registered letters to the hauler who's doing it, but it's also going to the restaurant that is being hauled and to the corporate offices. And they are saying they need to comply with the law, so... It's going to do two things. One is going to have, it's got the individual who's doing that hauling registered now and taking the training to bring it here and bring it to our plant. I believe it also will open up some of the competition with the local haulers because the other guy will not have the advantage of hauling it away again. And the local haulers have lost a fair amount of business in the last year or two to this individual.
So, you have several things. You have potential, potential things to fund the capital costs. Holding tanks, these are potential. Grease, new septic tank permits, and special waste. Right now, special waste is Bay Harbor. And as Dean's told you and Ross has told you and everybody's talked about, it could go away tomorrow. There could be other special wastes that replaces it. And then, a fifth thing would be any additional waste that you collect from surrounding towns, counties. You know, and there's an estimate in the URS report. So, that's really the critical part when you talk about the $50 or $51 to take care of operations and maybe take care of future debt reserves, maintenance, replacement. You have to come up, the key thing is you got to come up with the $600,000 to pay the debt.
Correct.
Well, in Dean's projections here, for example, revenue, using the examples that you stated, which would be permits, holding tanks, special waste. And he didn't include, you know, like Calcasas, Lillona, and grease. The first year, you know, is, 2010 is $700,000 income. And then, the following four years where he took the special waste and put it down to $200,000, you're still bringing in $400,000 each year.
But you need six.
Right, $200,000. But, the way I do math, I think the USR report said we're going to be 2.4 million in the hole by 2014, did it not?
Yeah.
Okay, using Dean's proposal, which is really conservative, and the way I add it up here, if we were getting the $51 special assessment, we'd still have 400. We'd be 800,000 short only. And that's a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, but Dean wasn't as conservative as URS. URS dropped off the Bay Harbor waste after 2010 or 2011 because it was not a guarantee and that's where the contract went. Whereas Dean's still showing, and we say Bay Harbor, but special waste, whatever that would be, 200,000 going out.
You know, when I was listening to Sonny earlier this, tonight, talk about the multimillion dollar business and getting started, every, I've never seen a business, and I've never owned one, where you decide to start a business and you know in 10 years exactly where you're going to be. It's not that way at all. When you start a business, any kind of business, you're subject to the pitfalls. The difference between government and private enterprise is, if the bank... The difference between government and private enterprise is, if the bank don't say yes, you're in deep doo-doo. Where with the county, the taxpayers can generally have enough money to pull up the situation around, which I don't think is the case here. And I was dead serious. If I, if Michael Jackson left me seven million, I'd be after that plant. Private ownership, I really would, because I think it's a goldmine. And I think it can be, under proper supervision, I think that thing could really make the county and/or if the townships decide to keep it, the township's the money. I think it's the goose that laid the golden egg.
Well, when you, when you, I think, I think I agree with you in the, in terms of the, the criticism that's come around. You know, because typically, you know, I mean, I understand being criticized for a public project where public funds are being used to pay for the project and it doesn't meet the projections, okay? This is a case where it's really a public project being operated like a private business with no revenue from any source other than the fees that are collected. And, and that is a little bit different. I mean, you know, we regularly deal with these EDC projects. Larry spent his whole career loaning money to startup businesses, you know, to get the, the beginning capital until the business is up and running. And in this case, they did it without any of that. It always had to be done by revenue they brought in. So, in that sense, I agree with you. And I think the criticism is unfair because there's, there's been no government money. There's been no tax dollars that have gone into that plant, regardless of, you know, kind of the inference that it is, so.
I think all the, the people that are, that are on this board, the townships, and the other two committees, we have to get rid, rid of being negative or negativism and start being an optimist. You know, every time we turn around, it's negative, negative, negative. And I think if we looked the other way and said, geez, look what we got, what can we do with this? And there's entrepreneurs out there, like I say, if that, if that plant, if they had to work with all the, to buy that plant, you'd indeed see that was the goose that laid the golden egg. I'm a firm believer in that, but it can't be run government-style. It's, it's got to be run like it's a private business.
I, I agree with Larry and, and Sonny that, being in the banking business for twenty-eight years and you take a look at a new business that especially is going to be constructed, that generally in the banking area, you'll see a three to five-year maturity level. That means the, the company's not going to be able to achieve its ultimate revenue until a three to five-year period. And in this, and in this case, the septic treatment plant, I think the three to five-year period is, is, is real. And, you know, looking back at the URS study, if we had that to begin with before we built the plant, guess what? Our financial structure would be a little bit different. Either the plant would have been built smaller or we would agree to build the plant the same size and we would have went with the special assessment or some other consistent revenue that we can count on to bridge it through the five-year period until it bridged its maximum five-year revenue structure. And, you know, if we do the special assessment, maybe it's a five-year special assessment and we, then at the end of five years, we'll come back and take a look at it and say, you know, hey, revenues are going fine now and we've got other sources, we don't need to renew the assessment. So, you know, the fact that it was done and, and even I engaged Dennis Loy in the fact that, you know, for something new like that, did the, would the, would the market allow either interest only for three to five years or, or a graduated payment? When it, when it got to a maturity level of three to five years, in terms of maximizing revenue? And the bond market just doesn't have that product for governments. It's either, you go in for twenty years and you pay the fixed payment for twenty years at the normal monthly payment. So there's, there's not a break for government financing when you get into this kind of project. And especially, it's going to take some time to build up revenue. So it's no wonder that we're, we're running short. And I think it's, it's to be expected. So, I think we got to realize that. The other thing is that, if I'm also hearing Larry and Sonny, that, that perhaps the roadmap, before we address the revenue question and the ownership question, is to hold these public informational hearings around the county and let's see what comes back to us. And then we can react. Hopefully that can be scheduled and we, we would have time to, you know, get those done. So in the fall, we can come back and address this thing and make decisions by the end of the year if we need to. And at that point in time, hopefully the investigative review will be completed. So, the only question I have for you, Ross, if that is indeed what we think the roadmap's going to look like from here going forward, is, you know, we've hold, we've held public informational sessions on solid waste issues. The recycling issue, the bins, everything else. And we've had them strategically around the county and we did a lot of advertising. And we did a lot of direct mail and a lot of direct invitations. And we'd go to those meetings, there'd be five people that show up.
I can answer this. You're talking about putting a, you're talking about putting a special assessment on.
I understand, I understand.
You own your problem with people showing up.
I understand that. So all I'm saying is, getting back to what Ross is, or somebody said, Beth, Beth and Ross said, unless you throw the assessment at them, you know, I, they're not going, I don't know if they're just going to show up to get an informational session on the septic treatment plant. But if you lay out that there could be an assessment on this thing and we need their input and their understanding on the history, then you, then you're going to have a higher degree of people showing up. Because we went through the whole solid waste plan with the townships and everything else and set up these public hearings, we couldn't get anybody to them. So I think Ross and Beth are right. You need a reason to get these people out. And if you mention, this is a public hearing, to talk about, one of the possibilities is a special assessment. I think then you're going to, you could probably fill up all the high school gyms.
Sonny?
You know, I, six thirty this morning, I stood outside in the rain and had a very extensive discussion about this septic plant with a gentleman who resides in Benzey County. But in, the new regulations will be within twenty-five miles of the plant and will have to haul his, his waste to a plant. He's not real excited about anything that's going to require him to pay twelve cents a gallon to get rid of his waste. And he had absolutely nothing to say about it. That being said, you know, he's probably going to have his waste hauled to the plant in Frankfurt, which, you know,
It's cheaper.
At least in, in my mind, while it's cheaper, is not adequately treating septic before it goes into the lake. You know, that's my opinion, you know? And I, last spring, I, I went out of, out of Frankfurt Harbor and went up along the shoreline and I could see a yellow plume coming from that discharge that was a good mile out into Lake Michigan. That's not good treatment of waste. And I'm fairly sure that it's not the only time it's happened.
That water's colored over there anyway, so.
Color's water.
It is, it's, just leave your boat in there for a while and see what happens to the bottom of it. Ross, how are we getting along with the negotiations or whatever with Calcasas County?
We're about set to go over there. We've, we've had people identified and I've just received two more townships that confirmed that they have, their townships have approved the funding for that, that was different. That comes out of the septic treatment fund. But we were asked that they wanted, we wanted that approved. And the county just recently approved theirs, so we should have that meeting very shortly. We've identified about eight people to go on that meeting. And if there's anyone else who thinks that they could be very helpful with us, we'd be glad to add you. We're not saying that we don't want anybody to go. We would like to get people that we can impact the, the Calcasas Board. I, I do want to do this, just to show you this. And if you can read that, it says annual debt payment, five hundred thousand, annual operating cost, six hundred thousand, total annual cost, one million, one hundred thousand dollars. Does that look fairly similar to what we're talking about? Somewhat close, six hundred and six hundred thousand? Does anyone have an idea when this was done?
I do, because you told me.
Can't see what it is, so.
It's a projection for?
Or a septic treatment facility. And it was done in nineteen ninety-seven. Those were the actual projections in nineteen ninety-seven.
So, so why wasn't a special assessment passed then? Because if, because if one had been passed then, we wouldn't be having this discussion or this-
Yeah, but you had inflated numbers.
Well, the bottom, the bottom line on this though says, cost per household, fifty dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
Per year. No.
I do that.
Dean did not have that, no.
That number's only about a hundred thousand dollars off what it current, what we're currently doing on the debt side. Right? But Rob, you were, you were involved with that. When the special assessment was discussed, what was the issue? You know, you were there for those discussions. Could you just kind of inform the board of how that went? The way you showed up, I mean, the least you can do is sit up and tell us.
We had to be here, Rob, you might as well put, put your two cents worth in too.
He just told me this a number of times, so let him know.
Rob Manigold, Peninsula Township. We went out with the wastewater treatment plant, many public hearings, and gathered information. We built that one. And when we went out for the septic treatment plant, I think we must have done thirty of those meetings. The civic center, all the townships. And overwhelmingly, people did not want special assessment. They said, we need it, build it, but make sure it's user-paid. And, you know, probably somewhere in the archives, you've got all the results and the questionnaires from that. And that's how we decided to find that funding source. We realized in the beginning, people had rights. We didn't want to buy the trucks, that was, keep it in private sector. We were not going to do mandatory pumping. And the entire facility would be based on a user-pay scenario. And you may laugh, but we thought we were very conservative in those numbers at the time. I think a, a lot of it is with the economy and people can't afford to pump. Our numbers were based on building, I believe it was over six hundred new homes in the county a year. We're probably, I'm not sure if we're making, building a hundred anymore. It's, what we did, when we realized we weren't getting the flow, we'd always built in the projection of special waste. At the time, we were talking more of the leachate from the landfills to bring that into the plant. That did not happen. And we were successful in getting Bay Harbor. And we're working currently, trying to get more special waste for this period of time. I agree with Larry and Sonny and Mr. Fleese. The plant has only been in operation a few years. We're going to have some rough spots and we got to get through them. I think, and really, I wasn't going to get into all this. But I think it's a point in the county where we have to make a decision or you people have to make a decision. All of the planning for the sewer and the water in the county, in the urban areas, has been done by five townships. We own the DP, well, that's a question of who owns what. When the bonds are paid, because we're always adding or to a building. But we own the Grand Travis County DPW. We own capacity in half of the plant, which you have the bonds on, which we did the thirty-two million dollar improvement with the city. We own, or we have put money towards the planning of the septic treatment plant. We have bought over a million dollars in property on Hope Road for the next satellite plant. When you come to us for solid waste, household hazardous waste, you're at our facility. You know, we're storing your batteries, we're storing your old police cars. The five townships have been saddled with that. And maybe it's time that the county looked at really taking over the planning of sewer and water and these solid waste issues as a county. And I kind of look at it as a growing pain. But the five townships have been doing it for, well, I've been here twenty-one years and we've been doing it all that time. But we want to work with you. We want to work with whatever we're calling the other townships now. Non-sewered or, I'm not sure what the correct term is, but-
No withouts.
Okay. Our intent in the beginning was to build the plant. Originally, we were going to build a septic treatment plant for the five townships. Then it increased to the entire county. And we, I think if you go through our documents, all of our documents were not to give special break to the five townships. Everybody was treated equally. Money would be dispersed equally. And I truly believe the intent was, once it's paid off, it would go into an authority for the benefit of everyone. We spend a lot of time on who's doing what to who. We've got to get to the point of solving the budget. And, you know, is it raise the prices, bring in more special waste? And, you know, those are the things that we need to key on. We need to get a business plan and follow it. Thank you.
You can stay right there one second, because I have a question for you. Ross, could you update us a little bit? You mentioned you were getting some questions together and answered for, from, from Rob and from Doug. And I'm just wondering the status of that.
We had a one meeting and I'm in the process of drafting those after we had our meeting. We'll go through those for the answers and then bring them back to the septic. It sort of got put on hold also with the investigation that was coming on and, and people were wondering. But we did meet and we were doing that then. Secondly now, we did have the letter from the townships in, in Vermetten and we have a meeting scheduled for that in about two weeks.
That's the other thing I was going to ask, did you update on that? So, and who's that meeting between and with and?
At that, with Mr. Vermetten? It'll probably be with our chairman of the Board of Public Works and Dennis and myself to begin with, to see what we had, need to frame out on it. We may, I, I don't know, there may be a potential that we might use the prosecutor or another attorney if we need to. Because there are some legal questions that are in that letter. A lot of them are not legal questions, there are certain things that we can certainly answer. And that's, when I talked to Mr. Vermetten about that, that's what we thought we'd do, is at least get on the table and see where we are.
Okay. Do, I was just wondering if Doug or Rob have anything to add to either of those issues? The questions for the meetings or the topic of the letter from Vermetten?
I got a call. Doug Mansfield, Union Township. I got a call from Matt Vermetten today that Ross has called and tried to schedule a meeting and make sure I was available along with any of the other township supervisors that had signed on to the letter. So I don't think it'll just be a meeting between the prosecutor and Mr. Vermetten and Ross.
I think from my-
It'll be the whole group, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can't say what they have on that side, but no, that's-
Yeah.
Well, if it's going to be with all the other townships, then Ross, make sure you invite-
And that's, actually I could call a couple of those today and Chuck was off today and Glenn was on the phone.
I thought this meeting was a meeting to get some clarification of some of the items on the, that Mr. Vermetten put in the letter from the townships.
That was the intent of it, but again, if it's going to open up to that-
I, I just know that in the original conference with the different townships, they have their own attorneys that they want there and understand where things are going. So it's, it's, you know, you're making a mountain out of a molehill. It's a mountain to some people, this thing, so.
Well, Ross, you need to get a clarification of what the purpose of the meeting is for. Because if it's to clarify the issues in the letter so that we can respond appropriately to the letter, then I think it's appropriate for you to talk to Vermetten. If they're looking for some kind of a meeting with all the townships, then the sewer townships need to be invited and needs to be posted and it needs to be a public meeting.
If that were the case, and it originally was, see, it's being scheduled for Mr. Vermetten's office. I, I, when I talked with him, the intent was to go down through the letter and clarify the issues and say, this we can answer for you this way, this we may need to get legal assistance in.
Well, that may be, in, in my eyes, that's better in, in terms of a letter-writing issue. But my intent is that the rural townships don't want to meet without having the urban townships there, the participating townships. I mean, we're seeing this more and more. In fact, in some of the discussions today, and I was saving this for public comments, I'm sorry, Dick, but I actually had emails from some of the rural townships after the, you know, issue with financing the investigation where the rural townships, two of them actually unsolicited to me, came and said, well, maybe we should pay for part of that. unsolicited to me, came and said, "Well, maybe we should pay for part of that investigation." And I said, "You know what? That makes a real powerful statement as far as our position in this county and our participation in that plant." So, I really applaud them for making that statement. I don't know that their boards will back it up, but that's what came forth out of that, out of your meeting the other night, so, but anyways. So, the meeting's being set up. If we want to do it in the letter and then meet as a group, but I know the other townships do not want to meet without their attorneys there, so...
I have a question, too. Oh, that's okay, thank you. Dennis and Ross, and maybe Pat Paul would be able to address this, but with your, the management at DPW, and I know, what's his name?
Chris Bide.
Chris Bide, sorry, escaped me. Chris Bide is obviously out of town. He isn't serving until October.
Sometime in October, we think.
And I know, of course, you're contracted for about twenty hours a week, and I know that, I have heard about the interviews that a subcommittee did regarding interim help, and I guess I'm not sure the status of this.
Status of that is, they had come up with a candidate, and actually, Glenn Lyle and myself met with the candidate a week ago, probably a week ago today. And then we surveyed the other townships to prioritize the list that we'd had before. I got those priorities, one on Saturday and one on Monday, this Monday, and now I'm getting a meeting with Mr. Bowles again to go over those priorities. So, we had requested those be back on the Friday, and they were, just because of people doing different things, one came Saturday, one came Monday, so...
Okay. The reason I asked that is I was concerned about the resources available at the DPW to adequately address all of the issues that are going on right now. Also, what legal counsel, I know you were looking at interim legal counsel that was probably one of the township's attorneys.
Yeah, we contacted the five of the township attorneys, and of the five, we got four responses, three of which would be willing to consider doing work if it did not involve anything with their own township. Fourth one did not want to, because they were totally too busy. And then, so we have availability of three, plus the prosecutor, if it were, you know, something that we could convince them that we need to do immediately, so...
Okay, so, but you're not, you, the Sewer and Water BPW has not isolated one of those attorneys yet to draw...
Well, I think the way we left it was that if we need an issue answered, and as I say, some of this, after I get with Mr. Vermont, and I will know if there's certain issues we need to do, and we may have to ask for counsel on that. But that's going to be an individual request. We're not having an attorney come to the meetings regularly or anything like that.
Okay. What about either engineering firm or legal counsel to perform the review of the standards of conduct? Who are, who will the DPW, or, sorry, Sewer and Water BPW be using?
Interim?
No, no, no. The engineering firm or legal counsel to conduct the review on the standards of conduct?
That hasn't been decided at this time, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that will probably be an agenda item at the next meeting for both of those boards. And that's assuming that we go forward. We have done some gathering of information of some firms that might be eligible to do it, none of them being local.
Okay. Assuming we go forward, why would we assume we aren't going forward?
Well, because, because the county board did not agree with the request that was made from the BPW to split the cost fifty-fifty. It now needs to go back to the Sewer and Water Townships and BPW to decide whether the arrangement that the county board proposed is an acceptable arrangement. So, it really doesn't make a great deal of sense to move that forward until we know whether the townships are going to agree with you.
One of the townships said before the offer was made that they were put nothing. The offer was invalid at its pur...
And I, and I guess I have that question...
I couldn't hear Chuck.
What Chuck said was that one of the township's board already had voted before the Board of Public Works made the recommendation to the county board not to participate in that study. So, his point is, is that it really wasn't all five townships agreeing to do it to start with, anyway. So, so it's kind of in flux, I think, right? In terms of the funding? Is that fair?
Well, before our meeting, it wasn't in flux, because even though the one township decided not to participate, the DP, the, sorry, Sewer and Water had agreed on funding a septicage fund, so, and they had that motion passed.
Well, that's true. You're right.
But I guess that I would ask, following up from last week's meeting, and I had this thought cross my mind after the motion, and we were on to something else, and I didn't ask it, but, you know, what is the, what is the result of the motion that the county passed, and one township, two townships, don't, don't fund that on one-sixth proportion?
And we save our money. Larry?
Well, obviously, one of the reasons why I made that motion was that I strongly felt that we're in partnerships with the five township. And, you know, the county has stepped forward, paid for the study, forty-eight thousand dollars. We've loaned them the money for the shortfall. I kind of feel we're, we've put a lot of good faith and effort towards assisting in having them as partners. And I also feel that if we're going to move forward with any legal costs or administrative costs for an evaluation and investigation, that I think we should keep that partnership. That means, you know, the five townships ante up, and we ante up equally. And my understanding, I think I heard correctly, I could be wrong, that the supervisor from Elmwood Township said that if it was a smaller amount, that he would be willing to take that back to his board and discuss that. So, you know, that, I just, that was a memory thing. I don't know how true that is. But my, the answer to your question is, is that I, I would reconsider my thought on this process if, if some of the townships decided not to kick in, and maybe some rural townships decided to kick in. We can come to the table and come to some kind of agreement. But to have, to say that the county should be, you know, paying half, I don't know if that's the right for you. My concern, really, my concern is, is not the initial ten thousand dollars. It's not the money. It's whatever we do with initiating the cost of this review, everyone's going to have it on their brain that this is how we're going to move forward. If more money is needed for the investigative review, and more money is needed to follow up on the, in the recommendations of the investigative review, how are we going to split, or how, who is going to pay for these costs? And I want, this is a mechanism that we, that we have in place now, and the basic question to the townships at this point in time, because obviously, they own it, we're the bonding agent, do they have interest, or do they not have interest in paying for these investigative fees and legal fees now and in the future, if the dollar amount continues to rise? That's the only question I want. I want to know that upfront today, up today. Now, if they're going to come back and say, "No," then we're just going to have to come back and readdress it as a Board of Commissioners and say, "What do we do now?" I want to know what the answer is.
But in the interest of moving things forward, I'm sorry...
Because we're only talking thirty days. I mean, you know, we've been talking about this thing for eighteen months. I can't see that thirty days is going to be of any harm.
So, Larry, let's, let's say, three, three of the five townships say, "Fine, we'll chip in the sixteen sixty-six," and, you know, the motion was that we would chip in that amount. So, what does that do for your motion, the fact that maybe two, two townships, for instance, refuse to chip in the money?
I would re, I mean, I'd like to know what the answers are first, before I kind of formulate it, but I, I have, I want this thing to go forward.
You, you made a motion, we passed it.
Correct.
I don't suppose, Linda, you have that, the exact wording of that motion I handed you from last month.
I did tell you what the motion was.
Could go downstairs and get the copy.
The motion was to have the five townships and the county speak, split equally, and assex the cost of the capping of the ten thousand dollars for the investigative review.
And you were specific, though, that it was not to come out of the septicage fund.
It wasn't to come out of the septicage treatment fund. And my, the principle on that is, personally, is if it's running the deficit, I don't want to add any more to the deficit to cover legal fees now and in the future. Either we're going to make a decision to fund this thing...
But you just allowed, though, the Sewer and Water to use septicage funds for Calcasas County study.
This is legal fees, and this is continuation of legal fees. That's my issue.
That's a business group opportunity.
They passed that motion, I think.
So, yeah, to ask you a question, Commissioner Richardson. I'd be more than happy to readdress the, the motion and the resolution that we, that the board made, depending on what, what information comes back from the townships about whether they are or not going to assist in paying for the investigative review or any other costs associated with it.
I mean, I heard Bruce Hooper say that he was, you know, he was supporting your, your idea at the Board of Public Works eight days ago, but when it came here, he didn't vote for it.
Yeah, what happened to that?
Well, actually, just to step in, I think Commissioner Hooper voted to allow the investigation to go forward, but he voted against spending any money on it.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the comment he made that he supported...
I noticed that.
...his idea of a split. And when he got here, he voted against it. That's, that's my question.
Very simply, what, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but what he said was, he didn't think the county, the county should pay for part of the investigation.
Well, no offense, Dennis, but I'd like to hear what, you know, Commissioner Hooper had to say about it.
Okay.
Rather than you put words in his mouth.
Right, I didn't want to fund it. I didn't, I wanted a narrow scope of investigation. That's what I did with, with adopting Bizdox's ideas, keep it narrow and short and cheap. And I didn't want the county to fund it. In fact, I don't think I want to put any money into it, frankly.
Okay, so basically, you don't support the idea of any kind of inquiry whatsoever?
Right.
If you're not going to put any money for it, then why do you, why would you sit there and say that you support the idea of an inquiry, but not put any money into it?
Narrow scope of inquiry, yes.
A narrow scope. Does that mean that, you know, you're going to do like research in the evening, or what exactly?
Well, I think we have staff, we have records already available. It's been a public process for, since nineteen ninety-six. There are records available on all this whole proceeding, how it was built and why it was built, and what happened. If you want to form an investigation, investigate it.
So, back to your question, Commissioner Friend, there's no reason for us to go forward and try to identify a firm or engage a firm in, to do this investigation, till we know whether the funding is going to be there for it. And, you know, where this stands now is, from a procedural standpoint, is there was a motion made by the BPW, whether or not the Sewer and Water Committee has all supported it or not, a proposal to you. You responded by refusing that, by turning that down, by a fortified vote, and you came back with a counterproposal and said, "Under these circumstances, we will fund one-sixth of the study." So, now I think it's got to go back to Sewer and Water. And in fact, even if you were, based on what Supervisor Corn said, even if you would have proved the fifty-fifty split, it probably would have had to go back to Sewer and Water, because one of the townships said they weren't going to pay their part of it. So, it needs to go back to Sewer and Water for discussion of the proposal that the county board put forth. And, you know, really, I think, Ross and I talked, until we know that it's going to be funded, it really is kind of difficult to go to an engineering firm and say, "We may want you to do this work."
We might have this thing...
We might have money to do this work.
Well, let me just toss this out. You know, in addressing some of your current concerns, Commissioner Inman, and one of them is increasing costs to the county, right? If this, if this were to grow, not necessarily as concerned with the original amount, at the same time, it, to get the review of the standards of conduct going and get it done, because I was at an East Bay Township meeting some months ago, and council at that time warned the township board that they need to get moving if they're going to do it, based on statute of limitations, correct, Glenn? So, in trying to incorporate all of those things and capitate, you know, the county's funding of this, and as also trying to get the townships to have some, what is the saying? They use skin in the game, or is that what they say? Or ball in the game, or whatever it is? Why don't we just upfront it, the ten thousand dollars from the county, or the fifteen, or fifteen thousand even, and capitate it at that? And say, "You know what? Here's fifteen thousand."
Is that a motion?
Because the fifteen thousand will turn into a hundred.
But, no, 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 that you didn't follow my motion. I guess it is a motion, that, you know, we would, and I'll rephrase it, but let me think out loud here, that we advance them, allocate them fifteen thousand dollars to start the review of the standards of conduct, and we capitate our allocation at fifteen thousand dollars. And at the conclusion of the information that they found at that review, should they choose to pursue any avenues, then that would be up to the Department of Public, I'm sorry, the Sewer and Water and the BPW. So, I guess I would make that a motion, that, that we allocate, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sapka, did you have a comment before?
I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead and finish.
Oh, please, if you have anything to add.
Supervisor Manigold made a good point, I think, and I think it fits with what you're saying. At a certain point, we, as a board, have got to, you know, be leaders and take a leadership role in this whole thing. And if we have to fund a study like this, maybe that's what we should do. You know, the, the study for fifteen thousand dollars could come back and say, "There is an issue here to look into more." It could come back saying, "There's nothing further to look into, the, you know, the issue's closed," or some other information. I mean, the public wants answers to this debacle, and I think we need to take a leadership role. So, I would support, I would support your motion.
And let me ask you, because you have far more experience with this, in, in retaining an engineering firm legal counsel to do an initial review, am I accurate? I mean, I'm taking the ten thousand and using that as a basis for the number, but does that seem reasonable, fifteen thousand, at least to get the review on the track, to know whether anything should be pursued or not?
You know, I think it should be. I can't guarantee that or speak for, you know, another firm, but it, that's a very reasonable amount to commence a study like this, I think.
So, let me make the motion that the, the county allocate fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of the review of standards of contact, conduct, the scope outlined by Chris Bizdox's memo, supported by the Sewer and Water and the BPW. And that, that fifteen thousand capitate the county's allocation for those purposes.
I'll support.
Does anybody have a copy of the standing rules?
I think you have a motion to reconsider the past motion.
I don't think we can bring up...
This Chairman, the protocol says you have to have somebody that, in the affirmative, to change a motion that the board has made. You have to re, you have to have a motion to reconsider.
Both your mover and second are, were, you know, affirmative on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to get the, do you need the standing rules? I can get them in the office if you want them.
Yeah, you have to have a motion to reconsider.
And, you know, I guess I...
Processually.
That's my, I, I'm sensing that, you know, putting all of this together, it fits a lot of the objectives of the people here. It's fitting your objective of this escalating cost that the county might be involved in. It's, it's fitting what I'm hearing from the rural townships, and, you know, Vermont and letter, and what I've heard. It's fitting the motions from the Sewer and Water and the BPW. It's allowing, should, a decision to be made for the, for the townships, whether or not they would like to pursue that. And then, you know, they have to have a ball in the game, or whatever that phrase is.
Beth, do you happen to recall what the statute of limitations the council said?
No, he didn't get very specific with that. He just kind of issued that as a, as a mindful warning. And, and that's the other thing, is something like this would get this going. The problem that Dennis just articulated would, would not be an issue.
Well, I, my biggest objection really was to have half the money come out of the septicage treatment fund. I mean, I just, from a principle standpoint, I just don't see that we should be borrowing money for legal fees and enlarging that and thinking everybody, and everyone thinks that moving forward, if there's additional costs necessary, they can always go back and tap that fund. Now, saying that, it wasn't the five thousand dollars that I really objected to on our side, and it's not the ten thousand that was, was needed initially and recommended by the Board of Public Works. The biggest hurdle I have is moving forward, if there's more cost to be... The biggest hurdle I have is, moving forward, if there's more costs to be incurred than cap, the cap $10,000 recommendation, who's going to pay for it? Is it going to be split six ways? Is it going to be split 50 county and 50 town, five townships? I want to know, moving forward, what is the agreement that we're going to have if this thing costs more than $10,000? I want it up front.
From the township's perspective, I just capitated $15,000.
I understand that, I understand. I'm just telling you my concerns. Now, with regard to your propos, I don't know if, if you have an official motion on the floor or not.
I do.
But, I, I don't have a problem personally with $10,000. Right? And I don't have a problem having the county cap our, our willingness to contribute. And as, if the, if you agree that beyond the $10,000, before this county board appropriates any more money, we want the answer back from the five townships, or Sewer and Water, or Board of Public Works, but basically, it's going to be the five townships that are, you know, they own and operate, they should have the say in it. How that, if it's going to cost more than $10,000, how are we going to, who's going to pay, and is there going to be a split or what?
Well, but, they already answered the question that they're interested in this limited scope proposed through the Bizdox memo. There's been a motion at Sewer and Water, there's been a motion at BPW. So, that's been answered. As far as who's going to further fund it, you're asking them to foresee in the future. I mean, you're asking them to answer a question that hasn't been answered. The, the answer may very well be that it's not worth moving forward beyond that.
I understand it. I want it, I want it, if, if, if we're going to move forward with this motion, if I'm going to vote for this motion, all right, then I want it, I'm fine with capping it at 10 grand, because that's the recommendation coming in from the Board of Public Works.
But the motion-
But I also, but I, but-
The motion was for 15.
I understand it, but I'm not in favor of 15, you know, I'm in favor of 10, because that's what the Board of Public Works wants.
You didn't have a problem with 10, you didn't have a problem with 5, so I added it in.
All right. I'm going with 10. I'm going to go with 10 right now. If we fund 10 grand, that's fine. But I want to know, at the completion of the investigative review, I want the question sent out to the five townships and the Board of Public Works and Sewer and Water, if there's more money needed, who's going to pay?
Okay.
And if you, if, if you want to put that as a part of your motion, then I'll vote for it.
We should do that first.
Basically, what I've, building on what he just said, would you take the second part of your motion and consider wording a subject to the effect of, rather than additional monies coming from Sewer and Water and Board of Public Works, rather than individual monies come from the individual townships to, you know, support the further investigation?
That, that's fine, they, they fund into that based on a percentage anyway.
Well, no, but, but that would be a direct, I mean, Larry's concern, and, and it's valid, is that since we've been loaning, you know, the septicage fund money every year to make the bond payments, by paying the money out of the septicage fund, it's basically our money that they're using for the study. He's asking for money to be paid directly from the townships. And if, if I hear him correctly, I think he's saying, okay, if we put $10,000 in, will individual townships then put in some themselves on top of that? Is that right?
If, if more money is needed.
If more money is needed. Would you amend your motion to that?
That's fine, I would make the point though, that, you know, coming out of the septicage fund, they fund that anyway. So, it's just like the other night, that was kind of a moot point, they fund, they fund that anyway. But that's not a problem, we can amend the motion.
Okay. Does the second agree with that, or?
Sure. I'm sorry, could you restate the amendment to the motion?
Well, I think Dennis is going to-
First I'm going to ask, I'll withdraw the motion. We need a motion to reconsider. The motion to reconsider says that a motion for reconsideration of any question shall be in order if made on the same day or at the board meeting next succeeding, which would be tonight, that on which the decision proposed to be reconsidered was made, and must be made by a commissioner who voted on the prevailing side. So, if you, if you withdraw your motion, and then someone who voted yes makes a motion to reconsider, then that passes, just by a majority vote, then a motion is in order to take action.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Well, we have to withdraw our motion and support first.
Withdraw first.
Withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw support.
You voted, you voted no, so I don't think you can-
No, I voted yes. I'm the one who made the motion.
It was his motion.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make the motion to reconsider my original motion.
Support.
On the splitting of the $10,000 six ways between the county and the townships.
I want to see your notes and draft from this. I wanted you to restate it.
We don't need to, it's gone.
So, you, you made the motion to reconsider?
I made the motion to reconsider.
Support. So-
Any discussion on this motion?
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close the same? Aye. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Friend? Motion to reconsider.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't want to answer that.
What are we voting on? Commissioner Hooper?
No.
Edman?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stebka?
Yes.
Willack?
Yes.
Fleece?
No.
Chairman Thomas?
No.
So, the motion passes, so I would make the motion then, that, that we fund-
Look, you won't go over 10.
$10,000. Count the votes.
Yes, count the votes.
$10,000.
That we out, that the county commi, the Grand Tauras County allocate $10,000 for the review of the standards of conduct as outlined by Chris Bizdox's memo, which has been approved by the Sewer and Water Committee and the BPW. And that we capitate Grand Tauras County's allocation of funds for that purpose at $10,000. And any subsequent funds, should the review be-
Extended?
Extended, be the responsibility of the five townships.
I'll support that motion.
If I could ask for one, one change? Instead of saying the five townships, could you just say individual townships?
Individual townships.
Because, because of what Mr. Mansfield said.
I think it's wonderful if the rural stepped up.
There may be other townships beyond the five who may want to step up.
Yeah, individual townships.
Further discussion? Larry?
I think it's absolutely absurd that we even have this motion on the floor tonight. The other night, we voted on a motion for just $5,000, and that motion failed. So then we voted on another motion, which barely squeaked by, by one swing vote of $1,666. So now, we're reconsidering, and we're going to spend $10,000. And it's like I said the other night, if you think, or anybody thinks, there is something so inappropriate, and I have to agree with Bruce, 100 percent, these are all public meetings, public facts, if somebody is so curious, why don't they get off their duff and start reading from day one? Because that's exactly whoever you hire is going to do. And why should we pay somebody? Let the interested people do that. But anyway, you get what you pay for in this world. I don't care if you're buying equipment, I don't care if you're buying investigations. I heard Doug Mansville, Union Township Supervisor, I heard him get downright angry about things that occurred at those meetings. And he apparently at the time was the lone voice. But this was all done in a very transparent way, and if we think, or not we, because I would never include myself, if someone thinks there is some negligence here, civilly or criminally, I suggest that you can get a very thorough investigation done at no cost by contacting the Attorney General's Office. He'll come in and he'll look at it, if you've got some proofs that maybe something was wrong. And at the end of his investigation, he's going to tell you one thing, there either is or isn't criminal wrongdoing, okay? If there isn't criminal wrongdoing, there very, very well could be some civil wrongdoing. Well then, perhaps we'd not want to look at it. But to think, for somebody to think that today's day and age, with what attorney firms and engineers get per hour, to think they can spend $10,000 and get any type of investigation is absolutely absurd. And it's really an insult to my intelligence, and I would think the intelligence of the other members of this board. I am in total disagreement, I'll vote no, I can't, you know, you've got one township that won't even participate. And they own the plant. So now, we're going to pick up the tab, and then you're thinking, oh, when we get to $10,000, they're going to pay for everything else? They're not going to pay for anything. Why would they? They've got people here willing to pay. No, I say, no way.
Sonny?
Well, I voted to reconsider because I was on the losing side last week, you know, and you voted to spend money, which I didn't want to spend that time either, and I won't be voting for this one either. You know, the way I see this is it's, it's very, very simple. I do not believe by any sense of the word, any of the people that you're going to investigate made any decisions or any recommendations or did anything without full knowledge by the Sewer and Water Committee and the BPW. I, I've been to enough of those meetings, they're, those, those people are right there, they don't, do not take action without BPW or the Sewer and Water Committee approving their actions. And spending money to study this thing is just a waste of money, as far as I'm concerned. You know, if, if all you're going to do is stand around and point fingers at who's to blame, because the plant's not operating as efficiently as it is, or it's not making money, there's, there's plenty of blame to go around, and it's, it's not setting in one of those engineering firms or that attorney's office. And I will not be supporting this motion. I, I think we're better off to move forward. I still firmly believe this plant was the right thing to do. It's, maybe it's the Cadillac when we probably could, should have bought a, bought a Chevrolet, but the fact remains, it's what we have. Let's move forward, quit worrying about what happened three years ago, let's figure out how to pay for it.
Bruce?
Yeah, I have to agree with both Larry and Sonny, and I will vote against this, as I've always voted since the beginning, of not supporting any expenditure of funds for the septic investigation. I think it should be narrow, even though, because I know it's going, it's going to go forward, that's why I tried to narrow it down from the beginning. But I think this has been a public process, there's been three boards involved all the way through, nobody was, nothing was hidden from anybody on how this happened. This transpired in the public eye. And to say now that we're going to go back and try to punish somebody or find something that didn't, that occurred that nobody knew, and that was somehow wrong, is rather ludicrous to me, and I will not support spending money on such a thing.
Beth, regarding your motion, I mean, might want to provide a little more wiggle room for you on that, is that I'm fine with the motion the way it's stated, that we would cap our $10,000, and then if there's any additional dollar amounts warranted, that the townships would be expected to pay for that portion. And I don't know if it would make sense to say, unless otherwise, we come up with some kind of a funding and agreement with the five townships, so.
I would amend my motion to.
Okay. I, I would, I think that would be the way to handle that. All right. I don't know who second that, but.
So, do I expect that you're going to be back next month wanting us to fund additional monies, because the townships chose not to participate?
No, I won't do that.
Well, you just said you would allow wiggle room, so a funding agreement could be made out with the townships?
Well, the, the townships might come back and say, county board, we'll do the 1-6, 1-6, 1-6, we're fine with it, we'll go with it. That was my rationale.
Anybody else?
Did the second agree with that amendment?
Fine.
Okay.
Are we done? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close the same? Aye. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hooper?
No.
Edman?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stebka?
Yes.
Willack?
No.
Fleece?
No.
Friend?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
No.
So, when can we get started?
Well, about tomorrow morning.
Well, you can get started, but we're not going to get you very far.
I think we're going to have to have a discussion with Ross about, you know, I have two firms, engineering firms, that have already indicated an interest, and they are downstate firms. Engineering firms. Engineering firms. And that was the recommendation, you'd go with the engineering first. Do you think it's okay for us just to select an engineer, or do you think that the Board of Public Works is going to want an RFP? Or do you think they'll be happy with whoever we pick?
I mean, this is just my opinion, I, I said, you pick one and you go with it, I think you've got it, I think you've got it, hit the ground with it. But I don't know what the standard process is.
Well, since, or since you're, well, under the state law, this is professional services, we can just hire somebody, we do not need to go out for an RFP. Since you're funding it, maybe you just want to give me direction, and we can pick a firm and move forward with it.
I would, I would ask other commissioners to give their opinion on that as well.
Do you want to leave that decision to the Board of Public Works, or do you want to direct us? On who to hire?
I think it's the Board of Public Works.
Your opinion, we should be, be certain.
I think it's the Board of Public Works.
Well, then it, well-
That's the end of the month then.
If, here's, you asked a question, if you're, if the county board's going to direct us to hire somebody, we can start right away.
The Board of Public Works has been involved in the funding of it.
We can, we can start right away. If you're, if you're going to do it with the Board of Public Works, or you want the Sewer and Water Committee and the townships to have some input into who we hire, then we're going to have to wait till we talk with them.
I think, I think, I think-
My biggest, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to agree that I think, you know, that the county administrators should start moving forward with this. I mean, at this point, there isn't any Board of Public Works money involved.
Yeah, but certainly if it goes over, I'm sorry, I missed the amount, whatever the amount was.
$10,000.
The town, the, yeah, I don't want to go there.
If it even goes over that, it's, we asked, the motion states that the money would come from the individual townships, not from-
Well, I understand that, that's why I'm asking, I wasn't so much worried about Board of Public Works, but I was Sewer and Water. Well, and there will have to be a contract, so is the contract going to be with the county board, or is the contract going to be with the Board of Public Works? If it's with the Board of Public Works, you know, then they're going to have to have some involvement. All I'm saying is, at least from my perspective, the township should have some input into who we hire, since they may be in a position where after $10,000, they're paying for it.
All right, I have a question. Can we ask the Sewer and Water Committee to have a special meeting, or the Board of Public Works to have a special meeting, so we can get moving on this?
Excellent suggestion.
Sure we can.
Thank you.
Today is Tuesday.
I would suggest that we do, I would suggest the Sewer and Water Committee first.
I would, I would still suggest that, that this be handled by the county.
Just, I need some, I need some direction from the board.
I like Chris's idea.
Well, you know, if we have, if we ask the Sewer and Water Committee or the Board of Public Works to have a special meeting, they may say, you know, go ahead with the selection, and, you know, we'll go with your selection.
That'd be my feeling.
I mean, we're not going to choose someone that's incompetent, at least I'd like to think we aren't.
I think that's what they told us the first time around, when, when they selected the engineering firms, the design, the construction firms that built this plant, and now they want us to pay for it because it doesn't work. You know, so, you know, what, what's the difference? You know, if, if we feel that we want to have an engineering firm do the review, we're paying for it, we, we stand up and have the review done. If it doesn't work, the price goes over the top, we ask them to pay for it. That's where we're at tonight. They made a decision, they build a plant, now it doesn't pay for itself, they're asking us to pay for it. Just exactly the same situation that they were in, in the past.
I, I appreciate Ross's comments with respect to moving this along quickly, but it seems that if the townships are going to have a responsibility to help pay in the future, I think they're going to have, they should have a hand in, in deciding, you know, who we hire. And I think if we can do a special meeting, or a special Sewer and Water meeting can occur quickly, I think that we need to move that forward, because frankly, we may be in a position where $10,000 isn't, isn't going to do it.
Hey, and I agree with Mike on that.
Well, the, so here's a suggestion to move this along. If the Sewer and Water Committee can have a special meeting right away, and we get some direction, we'll be able to provide them some names, and we'll get some direction from them, we can go ahead and begin the negotiations, and kinda get the contract ready and those kinds of things, so that it's ready for BPW. Because I think the contract is gonna have to end up being with BPW now at the county board.
And, and it's my understanding that Garfield Township has already voted to contribute $2,500 to this effort, I don't know if that would still stand or not, but.
Well, we have a ten.
Chuck is opening his mouth. Maybe he got it wrong.
Can, can we get, can I?
Mr. Chair, um, the Chairman of both Water and Sewer and Water.
Pat, you need to come up here, you're on TV, we gotta speak into the mic.
Patrick Paul, Blair Township, as the Chairman of both committees, I will call a special meeting, but I would specifically ask the county administrator and Ross, I feel strongly, this is my own personal opinion, that we need to pick a downstate firm to do this. The tentacles of local politics are too deep to have an independent review.
Yeah, I think Ross is already looking at downstate firms, so, I think you guys made that clear before.
Two firms that we have are both downstate firms.
And I will check with Diane and Ross, and we will convene a special meeting as soon as possible.
Any idea?
I'd have to get with those to see.
Gotta make sure we have a quorum.
Correct. It's Cherry Festival week.
Thank you.
Get you, get Jack back there.
Oh, yeah. One, one at a time.
One, Lyle, East Bay Township, I guess what I would ask, if we've got two firms already picked, I would ask that we get the names ahead of time before the board sets makes the decision, because personally, I'd like to do some investigating on my side of it.
Let me clear that up, I have never said we have two firms that have been picked. We have been notified by two firms who have indicated an interest in doing that work.
And that's fine, if we've got two that we're gonna look at, though, if we can get that emailed out to all the townships before the meeting, then we can do whatever we want with it.
That we would do, yeah. No one's been picked, though. These have been firms that have indicated an interest, when they saw the, the article, these are downstate firms, who said, if you're looking for an engineering firm, we think we have qualifications. We haven't checked them out yet either.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Jack Kelly, Elmore Township, first off, I'd like to explain Elmore Township's position on the matter, so that everybody's clear on this, I think it's real important. Elmore Township voted not to participate in, in an investigation, and that's what the motion was made at the Board of Public Works, because, pretty much, in my opinion, the Board of Public Works had the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, excuse me. Basically, a motion was made to go ahead and, and conduct an investigation without knowing who was gonna pay for it and how much it was gonna cost. Now, Mr. Edman, you've mentioned a couple of times this evening in terms of costs and the uncertainty. That to us didn't make any sense whatsoever to basically have a county board, the Board of Public Works, go ahead and make a motion obligating the townships, who had no input into the process whatsoever, to pay for an open-ended investigation, and nobody knew what, what it was gonna cost. So that was the reason why Elmore Township chose not to, it just so happened that Ross was at our meeting on the 8th of June, a conversation took place, we had a very nice discussion about the very same issues that we've all been struggling with for the last four to six months. And the conversation came up about the motion that was made at BPW, and it led to a discussion, and, and the township board decided that since they had no input into that discussion, since essentially they were being obligated to pay for an open-ended investigation, and nobody knew how much it was gonna cost, it didn't make any sense for us, because we weren't consulted, to go ahead and, and basically condone, you know, the investigation going forward. So I made, I knew that this matter was gonna come up three days hence at a Sewer and Water Committee meeting, so I took the opportunity of a Township Board meeting to get a sense of the board, 'cause I'm not in a position where I can obligate money on behalf of the Township Board without their consent. I can render an opinion, I can't obligate. So when I went to the meeting on the 11th of June, that's why I said no. And oh, by the way, Elmore Township was not the only township that said no. Acme Township said no. Peninsula Township said no. It was only until a, a inquiry or an overview was agreed upon, instead of an investigation with a cap of $10,000, with you paying $5,000, that a, a motion passed by a 5 to 3 vote. Now, I've been keeping score through this entire process, and, you know, the, the only vote out of the BPW, the Sewer and Water Committee, and this board, that has garnered six votes, was your motion to reconsider. This isn't exactly a mandate. All the other votes have been 5-3, 5-3, 5-4, 5-4. So it's not as if Elmore Township, Acme Township, or some of the commissioners here are, you know, the lone wolves as far as I see it. Now, your motion this evening to go ahead and obligate $10,000, and, and that was made by Commissioner Friend, I think is a smart one, and it says basically, you wanna move forward, because we've already talked about this structure, where you've got the Board of County Commissioners, the Sewer and Water Committee, the Board of Public Works, and they all made it different times, and sometimes motions are made in, in such a way that it doesn't get back to the, the other authorities in a timely manner. And here we are, a month later after the May 26 motion was made, and nothing's been done, as, you know, as Commissioner Friend has, has already indicated. So you've obligated the $10,000 this evening, it makes sense to me, if I understand your motion correctly, that you should just go ahead and pick somebody, it's your money. You, you obligated the $10,000 to conduct the investigation, at which point, in time, after you get the fruits of that investigation, inquiry, overview, whatever people are calling it these days, then you would have the opportunity to go back to the townships and say, okay, this is what we found, what do you think? Is it worth pursuing? Is it worth your while? We can't proceed without, you know, total buy-in from everybody? Because quite frankly, you can call a special meeting a Sewer and Water Committee, and I'm probably gonna have to say no again, because I don't know of any township that's gonna be willing to essentially enter into an open checkbook arrangement, without knowing what they're doing in advance. So I think the $10,000 has been obligated this evening, you have, you're willing to pay the money, that, that this board should go ahead and select the individual, then let's see what comes out of it, and then at that point, we go before the townships and say, this is what we found, this is what it's gonna take, are you interested in, in pursuing the additional work that's gonna be necessary? Because any, any talk about a conduct, an inquiry, an investigation, to my mind, certainly has the potential of leading into a lawsuit, and into a counter lawsuit. And again, who in the world is gonna wanna commit themselves to an open-ended obligation without knowing any idea, having any idea whatsoever, where it's gonna go, and what it's gonna cost? So I just wanted to make clear this evening in front of everyone as to why Elmore Township voted the way it did. Now, that's not to say that we can't reconsider, just like you just did, but we took umbrage with the fact that a motion was made essentially obligating us to pay, without us having any opportunity for input. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I, I would say you mentioned that if, even if there's a special meeting, that you would have to say no again, and I, I guess I would, I would ask you to think, you know, if the special meeting that he's talking about, that, that we've mentioned, would be for the purposes of deciding which engineering firm you're going to use. And I don't know that you would have to say no to that, because you were just being asked to provide input for expending the funds that we've just allocated.
Commissioner Friend, if that's the case, then that's a different story, but I hear Mr. Edman saying that he wants to know that there's a buy-in on the part of the townships. Now, maybe I, I misunderstood. Beyond the $10,000. Beyond the $10,000, and how do you, how do you buy in beyond the $10,000, when you don't know how far beyond the $10,000 you're gonna be?
But at that point, at that point in that meeting, from what I'm hearing, and maybe it'll go differently, but you're not asking for a buy-in. But anyway, it's just something to consider.
Sure. Speaking on my, on my own, without, going back to the Township Board, you obligated the $10,000, I feel perfectly fine with whomever you decide to go ahead and select.
Bruce?
Yeah, I think there's people's reputations on the line here, there's businesses that are gonna be scrutinized here, and I think we committed the money. I would make a motion that we direct Minister Loya and Mr. Ross.
Childs.
Childs.
The Childs, sorry.
To go ahead and start the process, get an engineering firm, and commit ourselves to this process moving forward. And I would move that we do that immediately.
I, I think he is starting the process, their joint meeting.
No, I'm saying, we start, get the engineering group, get it going.
You want the county board to pick the engineering firm?
Yes, I don't think we need to wait for these people, I, I think it's wasting people's time getting on a special meeting, it'd be hard to get a quorum anyway, frankly.
I can't keep up with you.
Is there support for the motion? Motion dies from lack of support.
Let's just go back with the.
I have a question for Dennis. Dennis, Commissioner Friend mentioned the statute of limitations that was mentioned at an East Bay Township Board meeting. Could you check with our prosecutor and, and see if they can, I mean, obviously, if the statute of limitations, you know, the cutoff date is like July 4th or something, you know, why move forward? I'm, that's.
I, I can do that. I, I will tell you that Ross and I, before the, before Chris Bisdok issued his results, the results of his study, before he did that, Chris met with Ross and I, I'll start calling him K-Ross, so that we're not getting you confused with him, and, and indicated, I think even at Board of Public Works, that there was no problem with statute of limitations, that he had looked at it, and that we're not having an issue with that. That's what Ross, that's what, I don't know if it was at Board of Public Works or just in our meeting, but Ross, you remember that?
Yeah, I think Chris Bisdok did reference that, but I think it's worthwhile checking back, 'cause I had not heard that it was a problem.
You know what we do, what I would suggest we do is we just get with East Bay's attorney, since they.
And I don't know that he made that statement on some definite knowledge of dates and contracts and just, he was just issuing, you know.
It may have been a general statement.
Kind of, you know.
Well, then, what I would like to do, since I think Chris Bisdok looks particularly at that issue, is I'll call Chris, and we'll see if Chris really did research it, and if he's comfortable that there's not a problem with statute of limitations, then I don't think we have to go any further. Or if he says, no, I really didn't look at that, then I'll ask the prosecutor to look at it, if that's all right with you.
I wanna go back to something that Commissioner Edman was talking about earlier, and that was, what process? I mean, I've heard you say a couple times, you know, going off in different ways, and how is this going through, and, and I understand what you're saying, 'cause I can hardly keep up with it. You have the Sewer and Water, you have BPW, the County Board of Commissioners.
Subtage Finance.
You, you Subtage Finance Subcommittee, you have, you know, rural townships, urban townships, people who have, you know, one mindset versus the other, and they're all sparse among all of those boards, so I can see where you, where you have that. Also, I know that, you know, you had mentioned to Ross about, you know, what was in the, coming up in the.
Right.
Meetings and so forth, and he did go over that a little bit. I know that for a very unfortunate reason, you haven't been able to go to a lot of the subcommittee meetings. And I sense some frustration with that process of the Subtage Subcommittee meeting. I would ask anybody who's frustrated to get in line behind me, it's, you know, a natural, a natural thing. But I do think that we probably could have done better on two fronts with the Subtage Subcommittee, and one would be communication out to the boards on where we're at with that, more so than even just the minutes. I know that we provide the minutes and all of the packets, but I also know we provide the minutes with like, 10 other boards worth of minutes. So I'm suggesting that maybe through the Subtage Subcommittee, as we commence each meeting, we maybe have a short synopsis of what was accomplished or determined that we would do next, and the next date, maybe potentially emailed out to the three different boards, so that they have a little bit more of a idea of where it's going. I don't know, you know, just an, just an idea, that we can, we can decide on that at that meeting, I suppose. The other thing where I think maybe we found a little bit of short with that is, you know, timetables with objectives. And some of that's really from just the whole beginning of the setup of the committee. A lot of the questions you were asking, I was sitting here listening to you going, I pretty much had that question in January, you know, because I, I don't know, I'm not at fault for anybody, I blame myself as much as others, but I'm not so sure it was set up with a direct timetable and objectives in place, and, so I guess, what I'm suggesting is that at the next Finance Subcommittee, and I'm not even sure when that is, I think it's in July, that, that maybe, you know, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but I would like some timetable of what we're doing there, I think is reasonable, where we're at as far as, that we're reviewing the modeling, correct? Any of you guys stand up and jump up and down if I'm, if I'm wrong from going to those meetings, but that we're reviewing the modeling, that OMI is getting back engineering information to us, that the, they're working on the meetings in the outer county, and that we kind of put a timetable to that. I guess I'm thinking that we need to, people are saying, I don't have input, I don't have input, I don't have input, and yet sometimes I don't see the people at the Subtage Subcommittee meetings. So maybe we need to address that and communicate that this is the process, at least from my understanding, this is the process in place. I've heard, you know, Ross mentioned, I think, kind of, we haven't really pulled the trigger on the Special Assessment District, or there hasn't been the will to do that so far. I think that's where that conclusion comes from, does it not?
You know, this board originally did exactly that. They assigned three of us to that committee, and they said it's going to take no longer than 60 days, 90 at the most.
Yeah.
Well, I remember it, and I think it's in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, there's two key words here. One's an idealist, one's a realist. In the real world, we were instructed to see if we could help, help figure out financial dilemma, subtage plans then. But it isn't quite that simple. You've got all these other factors, and it's like Jack, and he brings up a very good point. And I look out here and I see all those supervisors sitting there, they're not, no way gonna go to a public meeting of any kind and commit their Township Board to an expenditure of funds that they don't know, you know? They're gonna report back, it's no different than us. You and I attended the majority of those meetings, and Larry as many as he could, and the three of us, are only one-third of nine, we can't commit to County Board either. And if you stop and think about it, that Subtage Finance Committee really doesn't have any authority to begin with. All we're doing is, we're gonna try and suggest, suggest a solution. And now we're off on a tangent, we're playing cops, we're investigating. Engineers, lawyers, whatever you wanna call them, and I don't know what engineering's got to do, or investigations got to do with solving the financial condition of the subtage plan. But that's the tangent we're off on now. Now, I'm not sure what, what's gonna happen in July, you know, we'll be off on some other tangent. And it's just like this board here, and the Subtage Finance Committee, in my lowly opinion, if you're driving a team of horses, those horses both have to pull the same direction, the same amount of weight. If you got one horse lagging, or one horse going the other way, and that's exactly what we got. We've got the board here, and Jack stated it pretty clear by the number of the votes, you got, this board's pretty divided, those guys are divided, we all gotta get on the same train going the same way, period, or we're not gonna get anything resolved. That's just the way I see it, but I think those guys made some pretty valid points up here tonight, and I think you have to look at things in a, in a realistic view, instead of an idealistic view sometimes.
I don't necessarily see the review as tied to the answer to the finances of the subtage facility, I think they're two entirely different matters. And what I heard tonight was that this board can do nothing about the finances of the subtage treatment facility. Our council said, we can't do a special assessment, we have no authority to fix this. Yes, that Subcommittee is a recommending committee, but they're not gonna be recommending anything to us, they will be recommending to the Board of Public Works, so.
I've had a, just sort of, since we're talking about the Special Assessment and all, it's a comment that's been, sort of been with me all evening. We have a letter here from John X., but it seems to me that, you know, I'm not suggesting this necessarily, I just have to. this necessarily, I just have to throw it out, that if we wanted to find this as a health problem, we could do a licensing fee on septic tanks countywide and generate the same amount of money.
I think the URS study said that you could do that, and I think.
And that would not be a special assessment, i.e. a tax. It would be a fee.
Yeah, but, yes, I think you're correct. We haven't modeled that. It was part of the original proposal by URS at a small number, and I think it was $1,000 or something like that, to make up a small part of it.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Oh, on every septic tank.
I'm talking about an annual, an annual permit fee for owning a septic tank.
Yeah, I think you may be right. I know that I've talked with Fred Keisler, and Fred is the one area, when it comes to health issues, where we do have some ability to pass ordinances that can, that can have those kinds of provisions. So that is a possibility.
You know, I could see that getting us voted right out of office. And I would never, never vote for that. You know, it's, apparently, you have to look at this as a business. And Ross, you're a businessman. You can assess your customers, you know, put a fee on this and a fee on that. Doug knows that. We need to run the septic plant.
How is it any different than a special assessment?
Because the special assessment is a temporary measure, stopgap measure, to get us through. And I'm an optimist. I don't even think it'd take five years. I really don't. But unless we start looking at it, you know, if Sonny and I had the attitudes that have been displayed here tonight.
Just to make it clear, I wasn't advocating it, I was just throwing it out as a possibility.
Well, don't throw any more than possible. Anybody got anything else they want to bring up?
I think we're sat. Motion adjourned.
No, no.
No, we're coming.
We're going to have a public comment again.
Yeah, they've had to sit all evening.
They've been entertained.
Ratings are going up.
There, there was one other thing, though. Nobody ever really addressed whether, because the resolution to the BPW was offered as an option by John X., was it not?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
But you mentioned that the BPW is the one who has to do the Special Assessment District.
That's correct.
And you also mentioned the option of a resolution to the BPW was suggested in this letter?
Yes. Well, what he's saying is, yes, you, you certainly can weigh in on the issue. That's a final decision by the BPW. I think your, I think your suggestion earlier was a very good one, Commissioner, about a calendar that would kind of lay out what this process is going to look like. Because, you know, part of the reason is, is because as we started to get in this, and we started talking about fees on new septic tanks, or we started talking about special assessments, county commissioners said, well, wait a minute. If it's something that we have to enact, because some of these solutions are enacted by the county board, a fee on new septic tank, for example, some of them are enacted by BPW, special assessment. And so commissioners were saying, well, listen, I don't want them bringing some kind of a recommendation to me that we didn't have any input on. And that was the reason that this special finance committee was set up with members of the county board, members of sewer and water, members of BPW. It was so that the county would have some input, as would the other groups, in helping to collectively kind of bargain out a negotiated, let's say, solution to solve this problem, which would then go through the regular process of sewer and water, Board of Public Works, and potentially County Board, or in the case of special assessment, maybe County Board, Board of Public Works. So it is part of all that process that I think we'll, we'll go through.
And in what state, what was the time stated, time length stated that this committee would probably be acting?
I, I can't remember, Commissioner, but you.
You're probably right.
That sounds pretty familiar.
Dennis, I'm going to have to use this with my constituents to get me re-elected, because the board put me on that committee, and I foresee it as going past my term in office.
It may have been 16 to 90 days.
You are an optimist, aren't you?
That was a five-year term.
It may have been 16 to 90 days, but you are right. You know, it's, it's a very complex process. But I think Commissioner Friend's point is, Friend's point is a very good one. For everybody, if we can lay out a calendar, a timetable, that kind of says, here's where we're going, it kind of gets to what Commissioner Inman was saying at the beginning, where people can see a light at the end of the tunnel, I think that would be something that would be good. And so Ross and I will work on it.
As I rushed out of my business tonight to attend this meeting, a customer said, Larry, where are you going in such a hurry? I says, I'm en route to one of my political meetings, and we're going to talk manure.
And too, didn't we suspend those meetings for a while? How long were we suspended for, Mike?
They were suspended.
Well, we're getting silly now.
Public comment.
Okay, my input, this has, this has been great theater for the public, I think, but it doesn't.
You have to tell us who you are again.
Oh, John Porter, East Bay Township. This has been great theater for the public, and it doesn't process one gallon of septic. And, and I've made this point at other meetings, you've got seven townships that have to do with water quality in that business. You've got two villages, you've got a city, you've got a county. Each of them have a zoning administrator, a planning commission, a governing board, an engineer, an attorney. You multiply that out, that gives you 56 official entities that claim to care about clean water in this region. You talk about speaking truth to power. I, I think speaking nonsense to the powerless would be more appropriate here, because when you're this fragmented, fractionalized, nobody has any power to do anything about these problems. Just look at the way you spend your time. It's theater. It's not getting the job done. If you, if you had one authority board, I mean, how much power would you all have to give up to support one authority that had the power to deal with these issues? I can tell you, you'd have good attorney, a good attorney, you'd have more than one engineer, you'd have, if you had the city of Traverse City and Grand Traverse County, oh, by the way, you don't have a zoning administrator at Grand Traverse County, you do have a drain commissioner, so I would substitute him, and it's still 56. But that's not even counting the other townships. These are big problems. They're the same in every township, village, city. Biggest beneficiaries of this septic plant is the DDA, where the Boardman River watershed washes all of this septic out into the bay. Second biggest beneficiaries would be what we used to refer to as the rural townships, where all those septic plants would take all the manure from the urban townships. You know, you couldn't get a thousand-foot setback in East Bay Township, because there's too many people there. So they'd take the septic out to the rural townships and spread it around and inject it and dump it. So, so these are the beneficiaries of the project. Everybody says it's the urban townships. Well, it's the whole community. And unless we act like a community and pull together, like 56 horses all pulling in the same direction, give up a little power, folks, put together an authority that's adequately funded and staffed, and deal with these problems seriously, and let's give up this theater. It's my idea.
Doug Mansfield, Union Township Supervisor, 1233 Rodney Lake Road. I was chair of the Board of Public Works through this whole issue. And when I got off in August 2007, I was told we were a month away from completely accepting this plant. I just have a few things. This is not what we all want to be doing. I completely understand that. We'd like to be thinking about other things. But I've been saying it for a long time, and I'm really glad of what you guys did tonight, because it had to happen. I'm sorry, but this thing is not going to move ahead, in my opinion, to the rural townships until accountability is brought to this project through this review, and if it goes anywhere, and, and the audit that was suggested and required through the, through the contract. And I'm sorry, I mean, I sat it for six to nine months in every meeting. You need to do this. You're out of your contract. So I'm sorry that got to the level it was. But it had to be done like this to catch people's attention and be accountable. It's not what we wanted to do. We tried to do it other ways, but we weren't getting anywhere. Listening to Dean Bott is always amazing to me, because there's no politics involved. What he said tonight, if he would have said in front of me back in 2004, 2005, that there's no way I can project where the revenues are going to come for this, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And that's most likely why it failed at 97 or the early 90s, because I remember the same dreams, the same ideology, when it came with Bob Russell and Mac McClellan back then. It just wasn't there. You couldn't put enough numbers on it. It infuriates me now to hear this, because when I asked it, I was told, don't worry about it. And that brings me to Mr. Bizdok's questions. And Mr. Bizdok and I have been on the same side and the opposite side of many, many issues across this whole state. But he always spins things totally different, and he did through his entire review on this. And I'll tell you, at the end, he ended up with two questions. These aren't questions for attorneys, or for engineers, first of all, I'll tell you, this isn't engineering stuff. This is really more attorney stuff. I'm sorry, to review. I'm not saying it's one way or another, but I'm saying that's the review. And being narrowed down to those two points, I think it is probably a $10,000 review, if the right questions are asked to the right people. But it really hurts me to see where we're at now compared to where we were at so optimistically four or five years ago. The reason we're in part of the situation we are as a government and a world today is because no business plans were done. And I'm sorry, what you could do in front of a bank, as far as a business, five years ago when this was done, compared to today, it, it's not even the same world. And I will tell you that in our conversations as rural township supervisors, one of the fears we had, and one of the reasons we've had to bring this to a head, was the idea that the county would just take this over, and whatever it was, because it was a government environmental need, whatever the taxpayers needed to pay, they were going to pay. That really scares us. And that's one reason we want representation on this board. So take that as it may. One final thing, as district director for the Michigan Township Associations for the four county area, I just want to help thank you, Commissioner Wheelock, for making my job so much harder when I go down to Benzy County again. Criticizing other people's infrastructure is not going to bring us together as a region. They're doing the best they can. They have a very successful situation that they're very happy with. And I'll tell you, I get told more than once, when I go outside this county, to keep Traverse City right where it is, because we don't want no part of it. So I'm telling you, Ross, and the rest of the commissioners that are involved, when you plan to go to Calcasasque, or Benzy County, or further up Leonox, being critical of where they're at and what they have is not the way to do things. So, again, thanks a lot.
Ron Lyle, East Bay Township Supervisor. One thing came out tonight that I guess I've said right along, and I was glad to hear it come out. The county owns that septic plant. The township just signed, co-signed a note, a bond, whatever. So I'm glad that came out tonight. But furthermore, I'd like to thank all of you for taking your time to be here tonight. I mean, all of us could be someplace else, but this is a countywide project. And I think, as a group, we do need to solve it together. Thank you.
If not, a closed public comment, and.
Motion adjourned. Let's go home.
Good night. Good work.